City Clerk, I'm assuming computer clocks are spot on.
Good evening and welcome to the first City Council meeting of 2023. If you could please do, we'll call City Clerk.
Senator Lee, Mayor. Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Here.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Present.
All members of the City Council are present.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I wanted to start off. Wanted to start off saying Happy New Year. But we have, and we have been starting with extreme weather events. And I just want to thank our incredible city staff for all the hard work and extreme long hours and dangerous situations and away from their family that they have been giving to the city of Milbrae. I would say since December 31st, but they were actually out there also on Thanksgiving weekend. Our people have been out in the wet rain, they've been soaking wet, as I said, away from their families, and you have kept us all safe. I also want to thank the people of Milbrae. Most of you or some of you know that I do tend to read next door, I fall behind, but I want to say how proud I am of all of the people of Milbrae who have been so kind to each other and so caring for each other and looking out for each other. Truly, that's what makes Milbrae what we are, is by looking out for each other. And generally, people stayed home when we asked you to stay home, you stayed off the spur trail when it was dangerous from trees, and we couldn't be more grateful for that. We're a better city because of all of you. I also want to shout out a little bit to Public Works because they carried a big brunt of it. I was talking to the Sheriff's Department yesterday, and they said they were coming up to Rotary Park where it was getting close to flooding, and the culvert was full, but Public Works was working there, and suddenly there was a pop and water flowed. So again, the teamwork between our Sheriff's Department, our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, all of our staff who backfill everything else has just been amazing. So thank you again. Thank you, City Manager. I can tell you, 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock in the morning, he's out there on the streets checking out rain. So it's been a great team effort, and thank you for keeping us all safe. With that, we're going to move on to ceremonial presentations. And if I could please ask Vice Mayor Goodman to read the proclamation proclaiming January 16th, 2023 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service.
Yes, thank you. City of Milbrae, California proclamation, whereas January 16th, 2023 is a national holiday to observe the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., one of America's greatest visionary leaders who peacefully created civil rights activism in our nation through nonviolence means. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. rose to the national scene in 1956 during the Montgomery Bus Boycotts. The boycotts led to a United States Supreme Court ruling that Alabama segregation laws were unconstitutional. And whereas, he led many successful campaigns for social justice, including Freedom Rides and the Albany Movement. These campaigns helped the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And whereas, the city of Milbrae recognizes Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders and calls on all residents in Milbrae to reflect on the words and service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to celebrate his life and influence on our nation and consider their responsibilities to bring peace, equality, and respect to their homes and communities. And whereas, Dr. King's words and activity and actions are not simply relics of an era past, but a call to vigilance and patience today, impertinent today, as they were during his lifetime. And it is incumbent upon us all to carry forward the principles of peace, equality, and service exemplified by Dr. King, by treating everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect. Now therefore, we, the members of the Milbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January 16th, 2023 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service.
City Clerk? City Clerk, I actually have the regular agenda. I don't have who's accepting.
Mayor Alexis Lewis, representing the NAACP, will be receiving the proclamation.
Thank you.
And she is a panelist online right now?
She is. So Ms. Lewis, if you would like to join us and say, there you are. Hi, Ms. Lewis, and welcome to Milbrae.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few words. I wanted to, well, as she said, I'm Alexis Lewis, the first Vice President of the San Mateo NAACP. And on behalf of our branch president, the Reverend Lori Owens, and our branch members, I want to thank Mayor Snyder and the council for presenting this proclamation tonight. On the third Monday in January each year, we celebrate the birthday of a civil rights leader and activist, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And in honor of his 15th, his birthday on January the 15th, we volunteer and do service throughout our communities. And I think that we all should find ways to work to achieve his dream of true equality, especially in our criminal justice system. And just as on August 19, 1663, when he gave his "I Have a Dream" speech on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC, it inspired millions of people, and it inspired my parents and grandparents. And we are still inspired today to fight against racial injustice and encourage our children and grandchildren to work with organizations that are working to empower our communities and find ways to make activism a constant part of their lives. And I want to thank you again for this recognition. I appreciate it. And I'm sorry you couldn't be there tonight. I've been a little bit under the weather, but I'm happy to join you via Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you. And Vice Mayor, did you have a few words?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank First Vice President Alexis Lewis for joining us tonight. It's truly an honor to have you here for your work and for your commitment to our community. So thank you so much for that. And then also, I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you could, speak to any of the activities and that are taking place over the next few days and Monday, if you had any information and where our community could find out how they could participate.
The information that I have is, I'm a part of the Peninsula Multi-Faith Organization, which is 22 faith houses that join together to do things throughout the community. And the celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday is one of our biggest events. Right now, we have over 500, I think, 515 volunteers doing different things throughout the community. There's people that knit, there are people that make soup mix, there are people that clean parks if the weather allows. I think that there are going to be people painting some of the lunch tables at some of the schools, but again, because of the raid, that might be postponed. I'm going to be a part of the educational program, which I do every year, to try to encourage people to learn more about Dr. Martin Luther King, to carry his dream on, and to actually talk about what inspired him to do the "I Have a Dream" speech? What inspired him to go against such powerful people and such pushback, but he risked his life to do the things that he thought were best for everyone? And I think there are members of the NAACP that will be joining the Peninsula Multi-Faith to perform a lot of the programs. And if you'd like, Councilman Goodman, I can send you that link, and you could see more about it. But this is our 10th year, I think, of doing programs throughout the community.
Thank you so much. Additionally, we will be planning some, we are planning some other activities, and I could turn it over to our City Manager, if you'd like to speak of some opportunities that our residents will be able to participate in on the 16th as well. Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I usually will do this during my City Manager update, but since I have got the microphone, regarding Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, which is Monday, January 16th holiday, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the City of Milbrae Community Garden in Central Park, we will have a tree planting and a day of service to honor Dr. Martin Luther King on his birthday. So please join the City of Milbrae, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, Central Park at the Community Garden for a day of service and a tree planting.
Thank you.
So Councilman Goodman, is that on your website? And is that something I can share with other people?
Yes, it is. It is on our website, and we can also get your email for a direct link and send that, get that off to you. So that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Because the programs we're doing with the multi-faith organization will all probably be finished by noon, so that'll give people an opportunity to participate in Milbrae's celebration also.
And I should say, we'll provide the water, other refreshments, and some granola bars as well for all the volunteers that come out, so we'll have some refreshments.
And maybe a mud washing station.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lewis, for joining us tonight. And.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Excellent. One of the things we're going to try to do differently during proclamations is, at the end of all of the proclamations, we'll have a photo opportunity here to the council podium left on that. And all council members then can participate at that point. So with that, I would love to bring on Vice Mayor, sorry, Councilwoman Cahalan to read the proclamation proclaiming January 17th, 2023 as National Day of Racial Healing.
Thank you. The City of Milbrae proclamation, whereas January 17th, 2023 marks the 7th Annual National Day of Racial Healing, on this day, individuals, organizations, and communities across the United States come together to explore their common humanity and build the relationships necessary to create a more just and equitable world. And whereas, racial healing is a tool and a process for celebrating our common humanity, acknowledging the truths from our shared history, and recognizing our collective potential. And whereas, we must all work together to heal these wounds and to build a just and fair society for all, regardless of one's racial, ethnic, or religious identity. And whereas, the city of Milbrae seeks to build a community of compassion and understanding, which is essential to create the inclusive and caring environment that we strive for. And whereas, all individuals deserve the right to be afforded every opportunity to succeed and thrive in the cities, states, and countries they reside in. And whereas, every single person has the capability to make a change within him or herself that can have a profound effect on society. And whereas, racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, mental, and overall well-being of all citizens in the United States. And whereas, Milbrae's participation in the National Day of Healing signifies that as a community, we want to create a space to celebrate distinct differences that make Milbrae vibrant. It also means that we are aware that there still are deep racial divisions in America that must be overcome and healed, and some of these exist in Milbrae as residents still experience bias and prejudice. And whereas, the city of Milbrae, in conjunction with other cities and towns throughout the United States, acknowledges January 17th, 2023 as the National Day of Racial Healing and urges all citizens to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited for them individually as a means of working together to ensure the best quality of life for every man, woman, and child. Now therefore, we, the members of the Milbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2023 as National Day of Racial Healing.
Thank you. I don't know if the public can hear that, but we're having a lovely thunderstorm right now. For all of you out on the streets, one of the things that can happen with thunder showers is a lot of rain can happen very quickly. So as all of us have been reminded, please do not drive into standing water, and it's a good idea to get home if you can. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. I know we have our YAC Vice Chair Tanner Young and member Adrian Fung to accept. If you'd like to join, if you'd like to give them, and then we'll bring everybody back up. We're kind of trying to learn how to do this new way of processing things. So welcome, welcome Mr. Young and Ms. Fung. And if you would like to say a few words.
I'd like to say thank you, councilmembers and the city of Milbrae. I think it's extremely important that we recognize this Day of Racial Healing as our population is primarily people of color. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, on behalf of the Milbrae Youth Advisory Committee, it's our honor to accept this proclamation, and I wanted to say how racism affects all of us, regardless of our backgrounds or circumstances. And to ensure our communities are free of systemic racism, we must come together to explore how past actions have created present racial inequalities. Our goal is to ensure that Milbrae is a city where everyone thrives, and we must continue to build our internal skills and capacity to apply racial equity to our policies, practices, and procedures. Thanks.
Thank you. And we're going to bring you back for the photos when we get through all four of them. Next up is Councilman Fung. I hope we'll read the proclamation proclaiming January 22nd, 2023 as Lunar New Year. And the Milbrae Culture Committee President Niwa Chang will be receiving the proclamation. So Ms. Chang, if you want to come forward, and Mr. Fung, if you want to stand there or here, whatever you are comfortable with.
Yeah. So in celebration of the Lunar New Year, the city of Milbrae joins many families around the world to welcome the Year of the Rabbit. This year, the Lunar New Year falls on January 22nd, 2023. Whereas, the Lunar New Year signifies a transition into a fresh start, and it's a time for families and friends to come together in celebration. And whereas, Lunar New Year is steeped in tradition, with many customs and festivities passed down through generations. Families across our community will be partaking in their traditions. Some will begin to create new traditions of their own. And whereas, this year marks the Year of the Rabbit, which is fourth in accordance with the Zodiac Animal Order. Each Zodiac animal represents their own unique qualities. According to the tradition, the rabbit is known to be the luckiest out of all the 12 animals. It symbolizes mercy, elegance, and beauty. And whereas, during this time of joy and renewal, the Lunar New Year celebration is an opportunity to educate and promote the rich cultural heritage of our community. The city of Milbrae recognizes the contributions of our Asian organizations and businesses, and is grateful for their continued dedication to our city. So therefore, the city of Milbrae wishes all the residents good health and prosperity as we welcome the New Year. Therefore, the Milbrae City Council do hereby proclaim January 22nd, 2023 as the celebration of the Lunar New Year.
Mayor Snyder and Vice Mayor Goodman, councilmembers, I'm honored to represent Milbrae Culture Committee to accept the proclamation tonight. MCC is a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to build a stronger community with cultural diversity and to foster the forum and the activities for Milbrae. And it's wonderful that our city of Milbrae recognizes the importance to ensure the diversified culture of Milbrae is celebrated and preserved for all. This year is our fifth year to celebrate the Lunar New Year in Milbrae Downtown. And our tradition is we can celebrate our Lunar New Year within a month. So even the New Year Day falls on January 22nd, we choose January 29th to celebrate it. And so we would like to invite everyone to come and join us on January 29th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM in Milbrae Downtown. And there will be wonderful performances, dancing, singing, and street fairs, food, a lot of fun. And many thanks to our city council members and our city manager and our city staff's help for this special event. And we also like to thank our local sponsors and the community groups to support us, and we cannot make it without those support. So we're looking forward to seeing all of you on January 29th. And our special event chair, Marian Kong, also would like to say something.
Well, again, like our president said, thank you for the city of Milbrae, council and the city hall government to fully support us for five years, since 2019. And then we actually did one year over the Zoom, over the online thing, because of the pandemic, you know, what can you do? So anyway, but I want to bring a little special thank to really our local merchant, Sun's Market. And we have South San Francisco Scavenger, all our lawyer sponsors. And then we have Peninsula Clean Energy, we have Peninsula Healthcare District, and we have Chinese, I think, what, the CCHP for Chinese healthcare. All these people, they want to support the local diversity cultures here. So they, every year, I don't even need to ask them, they will just say, hey, when's the next event? So I really thank you. But I want to echo what my president just said. The public work, Sheriff Department, Fire Department, they all done every fantastic job. But without the good leadership from the city hall, this is not going to happen. Okay, so I really thank you for the council. And but now it turns to the good part of it. What do we have? Okay, what do we have? We have lion dances. I think this time, we may have five heads of lions coming. And we were lucky to get permission to light the firecrackers, not like this, but really the Chinese firecrackers twice during the day. And we even have a marching band. Oh, my goodness, marching band coming. Now, we cannot have parades, but we're going to march very short distance because the student of the school, they need to have opportunity to shine. So then, and all our performers is coming from all the different local merchants, different businesses, and then school, the children, and we have them to come over. Okay, so that's, we always do that. And then our performers need to say, we don't need to go out, they will come in. When's your next event? Next event, we want to have a chance to shine. And of course, I want to, in person again, even I sent the email invitation to all the council this afternoon. Please mark on your calendar, January 29th, start at 10:00 AM, ends at 5:00 PM. And I wish to see every council member present that day. And then, oh, I think it's a sunny day that day. Yay! So that would get, oh, one last thing, very important thing. We even have a free vaccination clinic. So whoever interested, they can roll out their sleeve, just say, hey, give me a shot. We offer flu, COVID-19, I think they even offer pneumonia, and then they offer any color. As long as it's a one-shot deal, I mean, for two shots, like a shingle, we're not going to offer. Okay, because I don't know where you're going to get a second shingle from somewhere. But anyway, thank you for your time, and then I'd really love to see you all.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, and eventful night. Thank you. Next up is Councilwoman Gina Pappen, reading the proclamation proclaiming January 23rd as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And virtually, Councilwoman Dr. Sue Stevens from the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Initiative will receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City of Milbrae proclamation. The United States Senate designated January 11th as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in 2007. And beginning in 2010 by presidential proclamation, each January has a designation designated National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas, human trafficking is an aberration, is aberrant abuse of power, a human rights violation, a violation of both federal and state law. Human trafficking tears apart families and communities, fuels organized crime, undermines public health, and imposes large economic costs. And whereas, the crime of human trafficking is present in every country and every US state, the FBI has identified the San Francisco Bay Area as an area of high prevalence for human trafficking. And human trafficking disproportionately impacts the most vulnerable of our community. And combating this crime is vital in the advancement of equality and justice. Human trafficking involves commercial, sexual exploitation, and labor exploitation. Sex trafficking is defined as a commercial sex act that is induced by force, fraud, and coercion. But if a person is not attained the age of 18, 18 years old, force, fraud, and coercion is not required. It's still a crime. Labor trafficking is defined as the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, and obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of subrogation in involuntary servitude, prenage, debt bondage, and/or slavery. And therefore, whereas, we must continue to raise public awareness about human trafficking and the signs of it, communicating more information on nuances of this crime, and dispelling false information that only furthers, alienates, further alienates victims. And whereas, the city of Milbrae supports the efforts to identify and address human trafficking in collaboration with other governmental and non-governmental organizations within San Mateo County. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And we encourage our residents to support the county of San Mateo's efforts in the fight against human trafficking by reporting suspicious activities, organizing and participating in awareness, training, and getting involved in local events. For more information on the resolution on this website, And report suspicious activities, call 650-743-4351. And I do understand we have a recipient here, but I do want to say, because our city has so many hotels, this is a crime within our own boundaries. So please, if you see anything suspicious, report it. So acceptance, Susan, I see you there. You're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Snyder, Vice Mayor Goodman, and councilmembers. Thank you for your time and for placing this important proclamation on the agenda to bring this issue, the crime of human trafficking, to the attention of those participating in this meeting. I'm Dr. Sue Stevens. I live in San Mateo County. I'm a physician, and I'm volunteering with the Human Trafficking Program to raise awareness among healthcare providers in our county. I'm pleased to be here to accept the proclamation. In 2021, the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program conducted a voluntary assessment of local agencies and found that in 2020, a range of 282 to 306 human trafficking victims were identified who had some nexus with San Mateo County, an average of over 23 victims per month. These responses include minors and adults, labor and sex trafficking victims. These responses include minors and adults, labor and sex trafficking victims. The San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program was created in 2015. It is a San Mateo County Sheriff's Office program in cooperation with the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff Association. It is currently staffed by Pamela Estes, the Human Trafficking Program Coordinator, who is also an attorney. The San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program works to enhance the response to human trafficking countywide in several different ways, such as seeking to encourage collaborative partnerships among county agencies and non-governmental organizations, working to enhance delivery of services to victims, training law enforcement, raising community awareness, and providing training and education. Recently, on December 14th this year, I had the privilege of, with Pamela Estes, of giving grand rounds at Kaiser, South San Francisco. We had nearly 100 physicians and healthcare providers attending the meeting because now I have personally called every healthcare facility in San Mateo County, and we're working on education and awareness for healthcare providers. The Human Trafficking Program has a monthly meeting called the Human Trafficking Initiative. Everybody is invited to attend. We have law enforcement, we have non-governmental, we have faith, community-based organizations, everybody just come and check it out. If you have any questions, and if you want to request any training for your organization, just email stophumentrafficking@smcgov.org or visit the website. Thank you for passing this resolution and inviting me to be here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. Thank you for everything that you're doing. We're also right next to SFO, which also increases more human trafficking in our area. So thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. Be safe. With that, we have finished all the proclamations. We've got a report on the 75th birthday, but if the recipients here would like a picture with council, and you want to join us, we'll do some quick photographs, especially our young ones, so they can get back to school or back to homework. Council, if you would join me, please. For everybody since we're off camera, the podium just makes it really hard to take photographs. We can do the digital reports, what would you prefer? Thank you, and thank you, people viewing this at home or later. If we could have Ms...
I'll help you with Constance.
Constance?
Adamopolis.
Adamopolis. If you could please join us and tell us, tell us all about our 75th birthday and welcome.
I'm Constance Adamopolis, and you don't have to remember the whole thing. I'm Connie Adams when I need to be. I'm with Organized Chaos Events, and we have been an event planning company in San Francisco for over 30 years, almost 30 years. And we do all kinds of things, from fundraisers to fun runs to galas and any gathering of people. I usually do anything but a wedding. But recently, after COVID, I have gotten into doing more festivals and things outdoors. So I'm here to help the City of Millbury to get participants to join in and create synergy in the city and create all kinds of different celebrations. This is going to be the 75th anniversary kickoff to several events that we're going to do throughout the year. So I hope to be able to contribute all kinds of fantastic ideas and interesting things we can do besides parties, like pillow fights downtown, or we could do shopping at night or in our pajamas and ended in pillow fight downtown, or we could do all kinds of different, you know, treasure hunts and things like that to get people to participate, shop at the vendors, and really get involved in the city. So, go ahead.
I just, and about our 75th birthday?
Yes. So first, I wanted to, okay, this is not going to, if I can do this. Your thing's not working. You want to do another slide?
There we go.
Go ahead and play. So I recently produced the Mill Valley Music Festival for 7,000 people. And considering that you guys have a beautiful, brand-new park and recreation center, we could easily create this for you guys and create a revenue stream. So there's all kinds of different things we can do. A lot of what we're going to do for Saturday's event include entertainment, walk-around, we have food trucks, we have all kinds of different things. I'm going to go through it right now. But this will give you an idea of the type of events we can create to get community involvement, food, beverage, entertainment, shopping, exercise, all kinds of different things, and music. Doesn't have to be a music festival, but it can be all kinds of different things. We can go to the next one. So we can just click through these. These are some other samples of events that we've done for about 4,000 and 5,000 people, just some festivals and outdoor events, and as well as indoor events and fundraisers. So this weekend, we are going to do an indoor event in the Rec Center. We are expecting hopefully 1,000 people if the rain would stop. We have DJ music, we have food trucks, we have a sports lounge to watch the football game, we've got arcade games, we have carnival games for the kids, something for all ages. We've got, so it's going to go from 11 until 3:00 p.m. And we're going to start off with children's shows. I've got a guy that escapes out of a straitjacket. We have another guy that does rope tricks. We have all kinds of different entertainment, stilt walkers, people that are walking around, performances. What else? The city is going to sell our new T-shirts that they just had made and water bottles, so those are really nice. We're going to have opportunities for pictures, we're going to have all kinds of face painting, balloon twisters, just all kinds of different things for the kids and arts and crafts. And go to the next one. So around the, if you guys are familiar with the Rec Center, the large room is going to have, let's see if I can point to this. There we go. The large room is going to have carnival games, performances, beverage stations, desserts, and a lounge for seniors to be able to sit down. We have arcade games, we've got chalk and hula hoop outdoors, we've got a sports lounge for the dads playing the football game, we've got dining, we've got some outdoor seating, but I moved most of it in, and we have three different food trucks. Then on the next level, we've got the store, we've got arts and crafts, including origami folding for the kids. And then we've got, the history museum and the library is going to put together a whole display of all of Millbury's history, so they're doing a really nice job on that. And then we have a quiet room for anybody that has small babies or someone that needs to nurse or change a diaper or something like that. We have a nice little room that people can sit down. You can go ahead and go to the next one. Part of what I've done for this event, which I encourage the community to get involved with, I went around, solicited, and got to know your businesses a little bit. And with my persistence, I finally got ahold of the corporate offices at Living Spaces, and they were able to donate an entire lounge for us. So you can go to the next slide. They have matched the logo for the 75th anniversary and included all this different furniture design. So they're giving us a 20 by 40 space of all their furniture, no charge. With a little more lead time, we could probably get them to give us a corporate sponsorship. We could create tiered types of sponsorships that might be available to these larger corporations and be able to get a little more funding to do some of these parties. Go ahead and change the next one. So anyway, they're giving this carpets and ottomans and all kinds of chairs and different things. You can go to the next one. So we're going to start at 11:00. We're going to have a local performance by the Mill Valley High School Ballet Folclorico, which is a Latin-type of ballet performance with the girls.
I think you mean Mills High School, not Mill Valley.
Did I, I'm sorry. Between Millbury, Mills, and Mill Valley, I'm going to get them all mixed up. Then we're going to do the magic show, and then we have at 1:00, dignitary speaking. We have several visitors. We have a beautiful cake-cutting ceremony that we're going to do and pass out cake to everybody. Then we have the Cappuccino High School Dance Performance, and that's a larger group of dancers, get the energy back up. And then we're going to go into a kids' variety show and then end at 3:00. But throughout the day, we'll have everybody walking around and doing all kinds of fun entertainment and things like that. I think that's it. Should be one of many, should be very fun and exciting, and if we can get the weather to cooperate, we'll get people to show up. But I think it'll be great. But I would love to do this and many more for you. I've got lots of crazy ideas, wacky the better, but I can pretty much produce any kind of event you'd like.
Thank you. Council, questions? Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you, Constance. So the subcommittee that we're putting this together on, I was really hoping no rain, but it doesn't look that way. But this is the start of many events throughout the year that we hope to bring the community together for entertainment, for education purposes, and all kinds of different things. So it should be very exciting if we can kind of get through the rainy season. But this Saturday, I do hope you can join us. Many of you have already seen our new recreation center, but if you haven't seen it yet, this is going to be a really fun event, so please, come on down and check it out. Lots of face painting, too, for anybody who's interested in that, and hopefully we'll get, I think Dean's Produce is going to try to contribute, fruit cups of some sort, and local businesses were really trying to engage here, I think wine and beer, too.
No, we don't have any wine and beer.
Oh, okay. Well, that one fell through. We're going to work on that again.
But we've got desserts and coffee and boba trucks and all kinds of different samplings throughout.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you. There's a whole bunch of volunteers that are showing up, too, so we appreciate everyone's efforts and coming together here. So happy birthday, Millbury. Here we go.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other comments? Councilman Feng was the other member of the 75th Birthday Subcommittee. Please go ahead.
Yeah, it's just, I just want a little shout-out to everyone who has contributed to a series of different meetings. Many community members have participated, pitched in their ideas and lent a, you know, helpful hand. This really is truly a community effort and bringing people together, and that's the spirit of all this. Come down and enjoy the food, enjoy the festivity. Like it's, like Councilmember Pappen just said, this is just the first of many in a series of celebration that we're going to have throughout the city. So congratulations, and Millbury is officially a senior, 75-years-old, and also a Capricorn, which is something to celebrate about.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, rain or shine, it will be held, as most of the event can be moved in or is inside. So we hope to see you all. I know the Leos will be there helping one of our other youth groups, and look forward to this and all the other 75th anniversary events. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. City Manager, if you could please handle Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing.
All right, Mayor. Good evening to you. Members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager, City of Millbury. As you mentioned in your opening comments, this series of storms really starting December 27th through this evening and throughout the remainder of the week. We, I am proud to report, and I've been in contact with all of you throughout the event, that we've weathered the storm quite well. And I want to call up a group of people that are here this evening. I asked our public work crews to be here. They've been working 24/7. I didn't want them to stay till 7:00 at night when they've been out literally 30 hours, 24 hours per shift. But if I can call San Batista up, Justine Bleeker, Craig Centus, Mike Kiligrew, Lamont Mack, and Val Mandawatt, they stayed for the meeting tonight. Come on, come on up, everyone. This is our...
Madam Mayor, well, he's away from the mic. I think we've all gotten compliments from residents to the massive and wonderful work you've all been doing. So thank you, just in case you don't hear it enough right now. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Everybody, the team that has come together, it's been wonderful. It's just amazing.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. And, you know, with that, just a few statistics, right? I think we all know with climate change that what we used to have in a 24-hour period, we're getting, you know, in two-to-four-hour periods of time, right? So we're getting these very intense weather storms that cause flash flooding, really intense saturation, and it's this crew, and thank you, everybody, for staying, because I know that these ladies and gentlemen have worked tirelessly, and I could not be more proud of this team coming together and really what they've done for the community. And, you know, my hat's off to them. And, you know, I was going to say, the NFL plays the Super Bowl the second Sunday of every month once a year. Well, all of this staff has been playing the Super Bowl every single day, 24 hours a day, since December 27th and plus some. And I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, not only the storm and the great work that we're talking about, even Thanksgiving, our water crew, Nick Tippins, Kevin Matlock, Brent Powell, Dave Martinez, Noel Gantley, and Carlo Modino were out for over 30 hours on a water main break over Thanksgiving. So they did not spend the time with their family. They were out doing what they do, you know, for a living, which we all take an oath, we're all emergency service workers. And, you know, everybody picked up, stood up, and came together as a team. And again, my compliments, you know, to everyone, so thank you. And more to come, obviously, with that thunder that we just heard. But, you know, I'm looking over at Craig and Mike and the number of texts at 2:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m., you know, 11:30 at night, and these guys just, I mean, they just knock it out of the park, and there's not much more I can say, but thank you. I think that this city's never been prouder. And Justine Bleeker, our PIO, you know, getting the word out to the community on all of our outlets and keeping everybody informed in the council. So, end of the council. My hat's off with great communication. You're the eyes and ears that are out in the community. You text me, hey, there's a tree down, there's some erosion, looks like a landslide, and I will report that we've had, what's that, I think, eight trees that have come down. The latest was this morning. Unfortunately, that fell on a vehicle up at Hillcrest and Skyline. That's about the most damage that we've had as a city. And we did have another tree come down off a spur trail in somebody's backyard, damaged their fence, but nobody's been hurt, and there hasn't been any structures or anything that have been damaged. And also, CCFD, Central County Fire Department, their crews, the Sheriff's Office and their emergency crews, everybody's just come together. You know, my hat's off to the county, Mike Caligie and his efforts in reaching out to all the cities and making sure that we're well-supplied, and those cities that needed supplies were there. So, all in all, not just the city, but the county. And so, you know, I just thank everyone for the great effort to protect life and property. And with that, before I get into a few more comments, I would like to introduce our sheriff, Christina Corpus, to introduce our interim chief here at the city. As we all know, Sheriff Corpus was recently elected into her new role as our county sheriff, and so she vacated her chief's chair here at the City of Millbury with the Millbury Bureau from the Sheriff's Office. And so, my honor to introduce the honorable Sheriff Christina Corpus to introduce our new interim chief.
Thank you, Tom Williams, for that nice introduction. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ann Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, City Council, members of the public. So I'd like, I'm very proud to say that the person that I've selected to be the interim replacement for myself is somebody that actually I worked with back in Corrections. And he was just a baby when he started, but we all... And he was just a baby when he started, but we also went to the police academy together, and he was my defensive tactics partner. So I picked the biggest guy because I always wanted to always be challenged. So what I can tell you is I did pick Captain Allen for the reasons that he has the qualities that I would want for the City of Millbrae, and that's somebody who has compassion, someone who has great leadership, someone that has great moral character, and somebody that I trust to represent this organization. And I trust that he will do the right thing. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to Captain Amon Allen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, and council members. As the sheriff said, my name is Amon Allen. Just a little bit about me, my background. I was born and raised in San Francisco, attended St. Ignatius in the city, and then attended Villanova University on a football scholarship. Graduated there with a degree in political science, and right out of college, started working for the Sheriff's Office. So like the sheriff said, I was a baby one time when we were in the academy together, it was a few wrinkles ago. But I am married to my wife. We've been married for almost 10 years, it'll be 10 years in April, and we have three beautiful children, so I'm very proud of that. On a normal weekend, you can find me at one of a myriad of sporting events, youth sporting events, whether it's football, or baseball, basketball, et cetera. So professionally, I've just finished a year and a half in professional standards, where I was the Professional Standards Bureau Commander in charge of internal affairs, training, policy, procedure, et cetera. Before that, I was the Investigations Bureau Commander and SWAT Commander, so a great deal of experience, fortunately. I will say that Millbrae has a soft spot in my heart. I was one of the first deputies, day one, when we merged with the Millbrae Police Bureau, the Millbrae, excuse me, Police Department years ago, which was a great honor for me, being able to be an ambassador for the Sheriff's Office in the City of Millbrae. This is incredible community, diverse. It's an emerging community, and I'm ecstatic to be back. So thank you for the welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, just a few more announcements. Our Millbrae newsletter that comes out twice a month, so if you haven't already signed up for the e-notification, it's available on our website, and that's to sign up for our bi-weekly newsletter. We have a lot of great information and what's happening in the city. The newsletter can also be accessed on our website if, if people have not signed up, and it's sent out through our e-notification system, as I mentioned. So events, we talked about some events. January 11th, tomorrow night, we have a traffic calming workshop that starts at 6:00 PM. So we are hosting a neighborhood workshop to discuss potential and upcoming projects that affect neighborhoods and traffic calming measures. So the workshop, again, 6:00 PM, it is virtual, so people can utilize the link, which, I'll read it here, but it's also available on our website and flyers. It's HTTPS colon backslash backslash BIT dot L Y backslash traffic workshop. We have flyers, and I know our PIO's been, been getting the word out. So the neighborhood areas that we will be reviewing for traffic calming include Park Boulevard to Santa Teresa to Santa Florida Avenue, La Mita Avenue to Santa Teresa intersection, San En Sommo Avenue and San Juan Avenue to Center Street, and Helen Drive to Larkspur Drive to Sleepy Hollow area. So those are the areas. So, so tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, very important to discuss traffic calming, because I know speeding is definitely something that we hear about out in the community. Also, as we just mentioned, January 14th, see, you tell them what you're gonna tell them. You tell them, and you tell them again. So that's what I'm gonna do. January 14th, this Saturday, is our 75th anniversary celebration, 11:00 AM, at the Recreation Center. This is going to be a great family event, as Councilmember Fung and, and Councilmember Pappan said. It was decided by the committee, instead of a black tie formal event, that we could be inclusive with children and the community and just have a great kickoff for a year-long 75th anniversary event. So 11 to 3, as you heard, it should be a great event, so we'd like to see everybody come out. January 16th, Monday, Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, 2 to 4:00 PM at Central Park. Tree planting and, and some cleanup around the community garden and Central Park area. Again, there'll be refreshments. So we hope to see everyone out to support the community and honor Dr. Martin Luther King. Also, we mentioned the Millbrae Lunar New Year Festival, January 29th downtown on Broadway. That starts at 10:00 AM and goes to 5:00 PM, again, on January 29th. And so that's it with my brief presentation. I'd like to just quickly go over the agenda. Mayor, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Go ahead.
We're good. All right, so then we move on to approval of meeting minutes. We just have one item, special closed session meeting minutes of November 15th. We have no oral reports this evening from any committee or commission chairs. Then we move into public communication. This is the item on the agenda that any member from the public can address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which is to consider adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safely in person and declaring that the City Council and City Commissions and Committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Item number six is a resolution approving city investment policy for the 2223 fiscal year and approve by motion the quarterly investment schedule for the first quarter of fiscal year 2223. Item number seven is consideration of a resolution accepting the annual report on the receipt and use of development impact fees for the year ending June 30th, 2022. This is an AB 1600 fee requirement. Item number eight is to consider adoption of a resolution ratifying proclamation of a local emergency related to the December 2022 through January 23 storms. I signed this declaration under my authority last week and are looking for the City Council just to ratify that declaration. Then we move to public hearings, of which we have no public hearings this evening. And then existing business, starting with item number nine, we have the update from the Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion City Council Subcommittee. Then item number 10 is a informational report from Life Moves on a homeless pilot program. That's the quarterly update. Under new business, item number 11 is a resolution to approve a grant agreement between the County of San Mateo and the City of Millbrae to receive funding in the amount of $370,000, $375,572, and to approve a later contract with Life Moves to provide rapid response outreach and engagement services for unsheltered and homeless individuals in the amount of $470,000, $470,572. Then item number 12 is an information and action item to move forward with the new city's website and design. Item number 13 is a resolution amending the 2223 adopted budget and approve the consultant services agreement with Gates &amp; Associates for the Bayside Manor Park and Marina Vista Park design and upgrades. Item number 14 is to accept by motion the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year 2122 year. Number 15 is to discuss and appoint council members to serve on regional county and city boards, committees and commissions, and council ad hoc subcommittees for this calendar year 23. Mayor, that would, then, then the City Council moves into council comments and adjournment. We did receive a request from a member of the public to consider moving item number 15 to, after item number nine on the agenda.
And thank you, City Manager. For us to do that, I would need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to move 15 after item number nine.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk, you got that? Okay, if there's no discussion...
Need a vote. Oh, sorry.
Is there discussion? If not, City Clerk, if you could call the roll call vote.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yeah, do we need roll call? We're not using the board at all? Okay, yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Item number 15 will go after item number nine, passed by the vote of 5 to 0.
Sorry, Councilwoman, it was, as we go, as we move towards having the new hybrid and the time in March, it's been decided that we'll be doing verbal motions, verbal seconds, and a roll call verbal vote because of the two hybrid systems on that. So we're all adjusting to the new, new world.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, Mayor. I was, you know...
No worries.
Shaking the cobwebs off. I haven't seen Mike Connor in person for three years, so it's...
Are you all, all done then, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, that concludes it.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I did find that there was an error on the minutes where the roll call should be corrected. So I just want to make sure that if there's approval on the minutes, I could do that with amendment.
Move approval of the minutes with the amendment, please.
Second motion?
And before I call the question, the correction was that the Vice Mayor had been at the meeting, and her name was left off the, the report. So we're just adding the Vice Mayor back to recognize it. I'm sorry. Then Vice Mayor Gina Pappan to the record. Thank you. Please call the question.
Councilmember Pappan? Councilmember Cahalan?
I was not present, so I abstain.
Thank you. Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman? Thank you. Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
All right. The approval minute of November 15, special closed session, passed by a vote of 3 to 0 to 2 with Councilmember Cahalan and Vice Mayor Goodman abstaining.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have no oral report from committees or commissions moving into public comment. Public comment is the time for items not on the agenda. If you could please, we're gonna do it this way, and this will be the new process for it. We will be looking for anybody who is calling in from home on Zoom, and the City Clerk will help me identify who those people are. Then we will move to the people who have provided name sheets on here, and then a final call for everyone on that. Again, this is for items not on the agenda. We will ask that you state your name and your street address. It helps all of council and the public know, if you're speaking on a particular area or issue, where you might be located. If someone from the public has a question, and there are staff in the room, and they are in the room, we may ask staff and that person to go and talk, and staff can then find out more about the issue that the public is bringing up. And I may have to interrupt any speaker if, for some reason, there's a technical project, problem. So if the sound from the Zoom call isn't coming through, you will hear me interrupting, because we do want to hear you, and we want, want to make sure that you are legible. So with that, City Clerk, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Mayor, we do. The first speaker is Joy Pasmonte.
Ms. Pasmonte, please join us. Or please unmute and join us.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Hello, everyone. Before I begin, I did want to thank City Manager Tom Williams, his staff, and our Public Works Department, the Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Department for their tireless work during these storms. I am here today. Again, my name is Joy Pasmonte Henry, and I live on Robin Lane. At this time, I am representing our schools at the elementary school level as a co-chair for the Parcel Tax Committee. I've dedicated much of my volunteer work uplifting our students' well-being and their learning environments within our public school system. We have some of the best, brightest, and most dedicated teachers, staff, and administration here in Millbrae, but we do have a broken system that does not provide adequate funding to support our children. We need the city's help and all of our residents to help. This May, the Millbrae School District will most likely have a special ballot out to renew the existing parcel tax of $97. We will need 2/3's vote. If this ballot is not approved, our elementary school district loses out on about $600,000 of revenue that directly supports people and programs, not infrastructure. Let me stress the people piece again. If this parcel tax, which is only $97 a year, does not get renewed, good people, people who teach and support our kids, are in jeopardy of losing their jobs. Please support the committee in any way you can and vote yes when this is on the ballot. Even if you don't have students in the school district, excellent schools benefit everyone in Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pasmonte. A City Clerk?
The next speaker will be Jean Perry.
Ms. Perry, if you could unmute and join us?
Sure. The item I want to direct my comments to you about is actually on the consent calendar. Will there be an opportunity for comment during the consent calendar?
Is it an item that you would like pulled from consent? I forgot to ask that.
On, on item number five.
City Manager, do we want to just accept a comment now or pull this off the consent?
Mayor, the proper thing to do would be to pull this off the consent calendar and hear it.
Ms., Ms. Perry will pull that off consent, and you can join us in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Currently, there are no other virtual handsprings.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, first up, we have Randy Torrios, who is from our Board of Supervisor, President Dave Pine. Please join us.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Snyder, honorable council members, city officials and staff. Randy Torrios from Board President Dave Pine's office. I just wanted to take the opportunity to wish you all a Happy New Year, and especially to introduce myself to the new council members. I know that this city is well-served by this council, and I think you all know you have an excellent staff. Personally, on the projects I've had the opportunity to work with staff on, they do such a good job. They make me look well, good, so I always appreciate that. And I look forward to working with all of you in the coming year. And happy anniversary to the City of Millbrae, and I look forward to seeing many of you on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to Linda Wolin, who is the new, what is Linda's title? Chief of Staff, as Dave Bruto has moved over to Assemblywoman Pappan's office. So congratulations to everybody. Marion Kong, and after Marion will be Michael Kelly.
Mayor, am I just speaking for, on my behalf this one, or?
You just put, you put public comments, you've also got one for item nine.
Oh, okay. So, okay. Oh, okay. You know, Marion Kong, live on Barcelona Drive. And I remember last winter season, Millbrae had a couple unfortunate rainy-related incidents. For the current winter season, I have noticed the opposite. In December 2022, often I have seen our Millbrae public work personnel cleaning the storm drain in my neighborhood. And during all the storms we have had so far, I have seen the public work trucks driving around. Just to remember, on January 20, January 2nd, New Year Day holiday, I remember I saw those white trucks with the city logo on the moving from one point to the others. One day, I encountered one public work workers nearby my neighborhood doing his work. And then I approached him and thanked him for what he had, he was doing. Then he had a short conversation with me, and he said that he and his peers are, have been constantly responded to the situations, monitoring already saturated soil, falling trees, and then pluck, unplug all the storm drain. And then he told me that during the holiday, one of the holiday, he actually worked 22 hours. I really appreciate that. And then I just found my personal heart, just my personal, I want to thank the public work workers and the leadership of this city. Now, another note, I have another one I wanted to share with you. You know, everyone in Millbrae actually want to live a very safe and friendly environment here. We elect five council members, you, to represent Millbrae before 2023 as a whole, and then to five individual districts after 2022. So many of us have high expectation to all our five council members. However, I felt that I must have missed some communication from the council members to, for them to come out to hear what a regular resident wants, what's their expectations. And then, and in my mind is, was there any individual town hall meeting or overall town hall meeting ever want to talk to the residents? I mean, it's not we just elect you all, and you just sit on the... not we just elect you all, and you just sit on the council table there, and then you don't talk to us anymore. That's how I felt. And then, so, and then, but only organization I noticed had done that is Millbrae Cultural Committee.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but just to be fair and equal, the three minutes has expired.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Kong.
Okay.
I have to get used to I have a different job. Thank you, Ms. Kong. Michael Kelly?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Goodman, City Council, City Staff. Thank you very much. My name is Michael Kelly. I live on Kelly Lane. It's a coincidence. I'm also a co-founder of the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition. And I'm here because, as of this point in the meeting yet, I have not yet heard an acknowledgement around where we are and why. But every community owes its existence and its vitality to the generations from around the world whose experiences led us to this point in time in history. Some of the people here were brought here unwillingly. Some of the people here left distant lands and came here to make a better life for themselves and their families. And some people lived here for more generations than can be counted. And the, the truth and the acknowledgement of this are critical to building a better level of mutual respect and cooperation, connection across all the barriers that separate us heritage and any kind of differences. And here in Millbrae, we're looking to continue the effort to acknowledge and honor the truth that's been buried. We are standing on the ancestral ground of the Romaitish Aloni that lived here for thousands of years before the Europeans discovered it about 250 years ago and proceeded to colonize and enslave the people here. We pay respects to the leaders and the elders, past and present. And so I'd like to ask everyone here, everyone watching currently, everyone watching in the future, please take a moment and consider the events that have, that have taken place there. The legacies of violence, the legacies of displacement, the legacies of migration, and the legacy of settlement that brought us all here together today. They're not all bad things. Clearly, the violence is, but migration and settlement, those can be really positive things. So to our new city council, I would ask to join the community of Millbrae to continue to honor and uncover the truth at these public events for city events moving forward. That's the land acknowledgement I wanted to bring up. The last piece I'd like to say on behalf of the Millbrae Anti-Racist Commission, or Coalition, excuse me, is that I just couldn't be more excited for what our future holds. From my research, Millbrae now has the most racially diverse city council in its history. We have Asian Americans, white Americans, black Americans. We've helped to get our chief, past Chief of Police, Police-Elected Sheriff Christina Corpus, who is the first Latina sheriff in California history. And, and we just could not be more excited about what the future holds. So I'm full to overflowing with positivity and excitement enthusiasm. I hope you all share that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Freeman Peng, and after that is Judy Louis.
So my name is Freeman Peng, live in Pinon Avenue. I wish I could do the same as Michael, has all the freedom of express themselves. Obviously, English is my second language. So if something confuse you, feel free to discuss and ask question. So I wish every meeting, every get-together is a celebration. But it's so unfortunately, in the last city council meeting, disgusted me. So within a few minutes, you guys step into the power. The first thing you do is to change the whole tradition of this lovely city. So I don't know whether the term is right. You know, like basically is that, like the new elect steal the title of mayor or vice mayor, whatever it should happen as the tradition of the city. So I think is that if nobody want to mention that, and as a, as a resident here, I do want to express my feeling. Or maybe this is the feedback for a good majority of the citizens who live in these areas. So I mean, is that the city council, what you guys do, what your guys' job is to help Millbrae resident to fight for the best interest. And unfortunately, is that as the resident here, and possibly you hear many times, they are paying the most expensive water bill and all that. Maybe there are many reasons behind this. But while you are sitting over there, you have the responsibility, and that is your job, to make Millbrae a better place for every resident. Is that, is that don't use this as a stage to pursue your, whatever the political power or whatever your personal demand and all that. And this is a wrong stage if that is what, that is what's something in your mind. So one very important thing I want to mention is the Enschneider. I wish I could call you a mayor, but I call you the same thing as you call me in the public. When you accused me some years ago, I physically threatened you, and then you reported to the police. You never provide any evidence. Obviously, is a liar. I wrote two notices to the city, and I'm expecting answer from the city, from you as well. I never hear anything. This is not what I moved to this country believe in. I believe we have a better system. That's why I moved it here. All right? So I thought that you still owe me a apologize. You still owe me an explanation to the public because you accused me in front of the public.
Mr. Peng, your time is up.
So I wish you will do the same thing. I still have something, but I will take another opportunity to talk about all I...
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Judy Louis. And after Judy Louis is John Chang. And then if this would be, if there are other people watching on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand so the City Clerk can see you.
Good evening to all the city council members and everyone. I do hope that this new city council member will take our community voices into consideration when creating and voting for legislation. We are in favor of any legislation that promotes a harmonious and safe city, that improve the welfare for the elderly, and increasing the quality of education for our children. And also, we especially would like the city council to solve the problem of our rising water bills. It's very expensive. Every couple months, we have to pay, you know, $600, $500. So thanks for your attention. And that's all for me today.
Thank you, Ms. Louis. Mr. Chang?
Good evening, Mayor Snyder and the council member and all the city staff. Yeah, thank you for you all working during this storm season. And Millbrae business owners, they still have to do the business. And...
Mr. Chang, can you get a little closer to the mic? We might hear you better.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't see your face with the TV, the screen in there. There we go. No, I don't need to see you. I just, we need to hear you.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you.
So first, I would like to thank Millbrae Cultural Committee. They are, they host on Thursday, January 12th, they are going to have the business collaboration meetings in MQ, in the previous Burger King. And I, today, I just walk through the Air Camino Real to distribute the flyer to those business owners. And some of the owners, they say that they have, at 2:00 PM, they are doing the business, and they cannot attend that meeting. And, but they have some questions and problems. They would like to bring it to us, to the city, and hope the city can help them, either the staffs or council member. The first one is that the 7-Eleven, they, they said that the owner, considering closing the shops because the homeless people, they just sleep in their front door. And then when they call police regarding the incidents, and the policeman, and the county sheriffs just say that, they cannot do anything because, unless they are in charge, they place a charge on those homeless people. So that caused a lot of problem for them to do business. Second one is that J E I Education Center, they, they say that homeless people, they just came into their place, and during the teacher is doing the educational session. And they called the police. They cannot do anything, you know, right away. So it's kind of hard for them to interrupt their business. And so they hope city can do something for them to support their business and do it smoothly. And...
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Your time is up.
Thank you.
But if you are staying or you get home and watch it, we have a couple of agenda items today on a homeless update and on funding for that program. So thank you for bringing those concerns.
Yeah.
The city shares those concerns. City Clerk, do we have anybody else on Zoom?
Yes, we do, Mayor. As you said, and you said, when I unmute, if you could state your full name for the record. Thank you.
Hello, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. So I'm Yaseed Castro. I live on 300 block of El Camino. And I have a couple of things I wanted to say, but first off, I wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone, and soon Happy Lunar New Year. It's a super exciting time, and congrats to the new council members and the new mayor. It's an exciting time. Like I said, I've been living in the area for just the past few years, but I haven't, and I haven't had the privilege of going to one of the city council meetings in person, but I've been watching a lot. So this is exciting. Anyway, I wanted to echo something that Mr. Kelly said earlier. I would really love to see a land acknowledgement, and maybe some more.
I think we lost you. City Clerk, did we lose him?
His mic is still active, but...
Sir, I, I'm sorry, we're not hearing you. Is there anybody else on Zoom, and we can try to bring him back in?
There's no other speaker at this time.
Is there? Last call for anybody wanting to turn in and slip. Sir, I am very sorry, we cannot hear you. And these are one of those technical difficulties that we may have. I'm sorry, I have to turn my own mic back on. These are one of those technical difficulties we have. Sir, I am sorry. I see the City Clerk is resetting.
Oh, there it is.
There we go. Okay, and she reset the clock.
Yes, I think you could try again.
We heard you up until you said Freeman Peng.
Until I said, wait, what?
Are you sure you hear that?
Yeah.
Was it Michael Kelly? I'm sorry.
If you could continue, you said.
We still can't hear you.
Okay, sorry, I just wasn't sure where...
Okay, now you're in.
So I think it was the land acknowledgement. I would love to hear, see more of that and hear more of that, and maybe more involvement with the local Aloni community, maybe bringing them or hosting them in some states. I think that'd be cool, too. And also, in a similar vein, I submitted a message via the website that I never got a response to that I still, you know, really like to hear back from about. But it was, I guess, in short, about some of the names in the area, like Sarah in particular, but Twalini, and Awani also come to mind that I think we could take a look at as a city. But in any case, I think also something that would be really cool, I, I don't really know where or who to talk to about this, but like transit is something that I'm really interested in, and I think public transit, bus route or something connecting, especially like the really hilly parts of the city, there's like, you know, as I'm sure you all know, a really beautiful trail up at the top of the hill, and a really nice spot to watch airplanes down by the bayside. And it's not particularly easy for those with mobility impairments. So I think having like some sort of public amenity that would transport people would be something that'd be really cool. In any case, thank you again for your time. I hope y'all could hear me well that second time around. And congratulations again to everyone. Thanks again. Bye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, every once in a while, we have really bad sound coming in. Please feel free to write to me at A-S-C-H-N-E-I-D-E-R at C-I dot M-I-L-L-B-R-A-E dot C-A dot U-S. You can find my email on the website. And, and explain everything that you need, and between the City Clerk and I, we will try to get you those answers. I'm sorry, we just didn't have a good connection tonight. With that, if there are no other public comments, last call, closing public comments. Moving on to consent calendar, I believe we... I believe we have, agenda item number five has been pulled for consent. I forgot to ask council if they had anything they wanted to pull. I'm not seeing anything else. If I could have a motion to...
Move approval, six, seven, and eight.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Second, six, seven, and eight.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. No further discussion. City Clerk, could you roll call? And do I need to announce the five for record, the three for recording, the three items on the recording?
No, Mayor, we already announced those items on the
Very good.
Previous agenda.
Thank you, City Manager.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The consent calendar, with the exception of item number five, passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. So bringing back for public comment, agenda item number five, this is adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safely in person, and declaring that the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. This is an action item. Public comm... Staff, do you want to give a brief report, or do you want to go just to Ms. Perry as part of our CERT team? I'm sure she's well aware of the order.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just recommend that we entertain the question from the member of the public.
Very good. Ms. Perry, if you could unmute yourself and join us.
Thank you. First, I want to point out the paradox of, of meeting virtually as a public health measure while we're going to cram 1,000 people into our rec center this coming Saturday. So what I want to comment on is that Assembly Bill 361 has allowed the public to maintain the ability to see the communications of our council governing us in the public eye. The Brown Act requires that our council function transparently in front of us. And so being able to have a hybrid and teleconferencing meetings during the pandemic has been wonderful, and our city has rocked it in terms of the noticing and the technical capabilities and to maintain our citizen ability to be aware of what's going on and to provide input into what we want in our city. There is kind of a juncture coming up on February 28th, when the governor's public health order is going to end. And that with it, it modulates AB 361, so that if there isn't a public health emergency declared, then it's questionable whether 361, AB 361 can be used to... to allow hybrid and teleconferencing meetings. I'm concerned that we will lose this vital access for many people in our community to our functioning council. And there is another bill, AB 2449, that could possibly provide some access, but, you know, I'm not sure it's going to provide the same open access that we have now to continue after the emergency order is over. So I would like to hear from our city. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I would like to hear how we are going to be able to maintain this transparency, to be able to participate, as we have been during the pandemic, in our city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. City Manager, I know we have a plan for this, and I owe... Cully. Thank you. City Manager, if you could please answer. I know we have a plan. I know it's coming on a future agenda. And also for the public to know that the city of San Carlos is leading an effort in the county to sign on to allowing some flexibility with, once we come out of the public emergency on that. So City Manager, if you could tell the public where we are on moving forward in the future.
Yes, real quick, and I think maybe the city attorney will chime in here. But we do have an item scheduled for the next council meeting, January 24th, to discuss this, go into detail on what the governor's order is effective March 1st and how all the kind of subtleties of changes of the Brown Act occur to continue to allow remote and hybrid meetings for the public, but not for the elected body. So, Mr. Connor?
Correct. Thank you, City Manager. So as was stated, the governor's order, the emergency order, is going to go out of effect on February 28th. And so really, March 1st, we're back to the way things were prior to the pandemic. The most useful teleconference mechanism is one we've always had. AB 2449 is very limited and really isn't going to help much. It gives some leeway for people who are members of bodies who have emergencies or other conditions that prevent them from attending. I think really the thing that the commenter mentions, and I think that the city can do, is that if you desire to keep having a hybrid meeting, while we've always had MCTV to, for people to watch the meeting in terms of being able to participate, and especially if people are concerned about coming out in public, that does, through Zoom, still gives them the opportunity to participate. So I think that's really what the comment was getting to. And we do have a report that's already being drafted. Be presented at your next meeting to kind of explain all the ins and outs of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel, before we bring this back for a motion, any comments by Councilwoman Papp?
We're talking transparency. Is it just me or is the video not quite synced?
It's slow.
It's slow. Okay, hopefully we can fix that. Since we're trying to be completely transparent, we'd also like to have it...
I hate to say it, I've noticed on other regional meetings that the TV and we are usually out of sync on that. Any other comments? With that, could I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Thank you, Ms. Pappan?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cahalan. City Clerk, if you could roll call. Call, roll.
Senator Lee, Mayor? Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Consent, item number five, passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving into, there are no public hearings tonight, and we are going to move into existing business. We're going to take item number nine, which is social equity and cultural inclusion, council subcommittee update. And our Assistant City Manager, Human Resources Director Isabel Carlos, will give a report. And then I'm sure the subcommittee will have comments. And then we will come back to agenda, or come to agenda item 15, which has some relationships.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Isabel Carlos. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director, and I'll be conducting the presentation on item nine, social equity and cultural inclusion. Is it the top one? Next slide, please. So the first slide just goes over the presentation agenda. I'm going to be speaking on background information. I will discuss Millbrae community engagement that was done over the years. I'll speak on the ad hoc subcommittee of the...
Assistant City Manager, you might want to get a little closer to the microphone.
I'll speak on the ad hoc...
There you go.
...subcommittee of the city council, the recommendations by the subcommittee, and then we'll end with a Q and A discussion. Next slide, please. So in 2020, awareness to racial and social inequities was heightened as a result of the George Floyd tragedy. This tragedy caused many public concerns, protests, and demonstrations across the nation demanding justice for George Floyd and calling for immediate change in all branches of government to ensure the protection, safety, equality, and inclusion of all Americans through fair and just legislation, governance, policing, and policies. At the same time, the COVID-19 pandemic, which began in the early 2020 and resulted in unprecedented catastrophic human loss across the world, resulted in long-term negative impacts and also heightened awareness and intensified racial and social equity, this time against the Asian community across the nation, causing concerns for safety to Millbrae's Asian-American Pacific Islander community. The city of Millbrae is known for its rich history, culture, and diverse population. Its city leadership has historically embraced policies, principles, and progressive developments that promote equity, inclusion, and the overall well-being of its residents. And towards that end, the city conducted a series of events to examine and better understand the depth of the inequities in the city. Next slide, please. So the city conducted town hall engagements, youth summits with students from Mills High School, Cappuccino High School, Taylor Middle School. And these forums were intended to identify racial identity and discrimination perceptions amongst the Millbrae population and to receive recommendations for remedies on these issues. The city retained expert assistance and facilitated the activities in multiple languages, including Mandarin, Tagalog, and Spanish. As you can see, there's a list. I won't go over all of them, but you can read them on your screen. Next slide. These activities brought the community together to dialogue about the issues surrounding disparities and inequities in the community with a request to form a subcommittee to continue the efforts and to ensure racial and social equity and cultural inclusion in the city. We did have, as you can see on the screen, some events that engaged the youth population as well in the different high schools, as mentioned earlier. Next slide. So in response, on September 15th, 2021, the city council formed an ad hoc subcommittee on social equity and cultural inclusion to further examine and to identify the inequities that exist here in the city of Millbrae and to bring recommendations to the council as a whole. The ad hoc subcommittee is committed to continue its work and to ensure equity in policies, to enhance awareness and education, to ensure fair, equitable practices, to ensure open and transparent access to the delivery of services, economic development opportunities that are fair, public safety, and to build and foster community trust, tolerance, acceptance, respect, and inclusion for its residents, its visitors, and businesses in the city as well. The ad hoc subcommittee has met with other agencies to discuss and to study their diversity, equity, and inclusion models as well, specifically the city of South San Francisco. Next slide. As mentioned, the city's subcommittee has met to discuss the city's position and progress and to continue to plan for an equitable and inclusive community. The recommendation include various efforts led by the, that can be led by the ad hoc subcommittee, including continuing the outreach and serving of Millbrae community, including the youth, to receive their current perceptions now as we enter the post-COVID-19 era, retaining a contract with an expert firm or nonprofit organization to assist with planned development, to facilitate additional diversity, equity, and inclusion training for city staff. Some training has been conducted already. To assess policies to ensure that they create equitable, open, and transparent access to government services and to economic vitality. Developing sample or citywide surveys to learn about current social equity challenges facing our residents and businesses, including an assessment of their specific needs here in Millbrae and how to best remedy those issues. Next slide, please. Facilitating events to bring awareness to mental health issues and facilitating solutions for health disparities. Facilitating a civic youth engagement workshop to educate the youth on how government operates and how their voices can be heard. Strengthening partnerships with local community-based organizations, school districts, community health organizations, and social justice organizations. And also establishing goals and objectives to take steps to bring awareness, education, and social economic resources to ensure a more equitable and inclusive city that celebrates diversity. So as, this concludes the staff's presentation with the recommendation for the city council to review and provide approval to continue the work under the current city council ad hoc subcommittee structure and to implement some or all of the subcommittee recommendations. And we can take questions at this time.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. What I'd like to do is see if the subcommittee has any comments to add. I'm sorry. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. What I'd like to do is see if the subcommittee has any information they'd like to add, then open it up for public comments, and then bring it back for council discussion and action. City Subcommittee, Councilman? Councilwoman?
I think we're interested in hearing public comment and then...
You're going to get to comment back. Just if there's nothing else you wanted to add, okay, then I'll... Councilmembers? Public comment? First up on the public comment is Marion Kong. No, you come on up to the mic. And Ms. Kong, you also have an agenda item 15. So right now, we're talking about just this particular committee.
Okay. Actually, I think it started well. But I actually never involved with this subcommittee study at all. Because actually, I do not believe there's a major equity issue here. I think there's really issue is communication. It's a language barrier. I mean, we are all people in United States. We are all citizens here. So I really personally don't see color, don't see race, but I do see people need to learn to appreciate different people heritage. If you really learn their culture, that's what our nonprofit's working on. Learn their culture. Maybe you can appreciate where they come from, why they are, instead of just say, oh, we have a high Asian population. We have 11%, 10% Hispanic here, and then we had to watch out their equity. I mean, come on. I mean, it's just like, it's communication. I mean, if I have any kind of concern, I have five of you. You are now representing each district. So why can't I just talk to you? But I think it's a good effort the subcommittee had done to the youth, because we had to educate them, to have them embrace all races, okay? And then I think our government actually did a good job in education, to educate a lot of our children. Because my children, they don't even see color anyway. They just see their friends, their peer, okay? So I actually think it's, the subcommittee did a good job. I don't think they did continue. And then I think the subcommittee actually is another way of building another layer of famous bureaucracy. Why do we need to talk to the subcommittee? Why can't we just talk to the real person, real party, real department? What is the issue? That's my personal feeling, okay? Because I maybe have less language barrier, so I don't really see there's equity concern here. We all Millbrae resident, we all citizen of the United States, and then we will work together to make a better community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. Michael Kelly?
Thank you very much. Again, Michael Kelly on Kelly Lane, co-founder of the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition. Respectfully, the comments that were just shared, I think are narrow for the kind of people that say, I don't see race, I don't see color. If you can't see color, then you can't see race. And if you can't see race, you can't see racism. And if you can't see racism, you're part of the problem, that status quo. Millbrae has a history, a legacy of redlining, where people of color, black and Asian and Hispanic, could not own or even live in houses in every single one of Millbrae's five new districts when the new houses were built in districts, in the 40s, 50s, and 60s. And it's just, it's really upsetting to me that when we deal with situations like hate and coming together for racial healing, when Councilman Fung was assaulted, you know, the hate, the studies show most hate in the United States comes from a basis of racism. It needs addressing. Just because some people don't feel it or experience, it doesn't mean it's there. And social equity is not just race. There's elements of access. The part of our community that lives on the east side of El Camino cannot safely get across El Camino to use the new rec center. The children that have to go to school at Taylor to get to the skate park, it's a question of access and equity beyond race. There's the socio-economic aspect of it. There's age elements. There's the people that, you know, are taking care of children and their parents and maybe don't have a car. So it's not just, you know, the racial component, although that's a very, very strong element around what we're talking about for social equity. Social equity spans equal access to health care and affordable housing and safety. We still see this amazingly high incidence of a majority of people arrested, people of color compared to white Americans living in the Bay area, in the peninsula. All of those things exist. They are real. And just saying, I don't experience them or I don't see them, is, again, part of status quo. And the very element that, you know, we're looking to bring is have a diverse commission established so that all the elements can be represented and say, here's what needs to happen to get social fairness and social equity. You'll notice, it's not the racial equity commission that's being proposed. It's the social equity commission. It goes beyond race. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Gina Miranda? And after Gina is Freeman Peng.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and chat with you. And thank you so much for bringing up this issue with social equity. It's a big topic. I'm a longtime resident of Millbrae. I've raised both of my boys here in the public schools. And I had a couple of stories I wanted to share with you. But first, let me just say that I too was one of those people that didn't think that racial problems were real, especially not in Millbrae or even in other places. But there's this saying that you might have heard, that you can't see the dust in the room until the door opens up and the light shines directly on it. And then you're like, where did that dust come from? It wasn't there before. Has it was? Anyway, so two quick stories. One of the... One of the events that Millbrae had during this past year was with Millbrae students, where Millbrae students got to talk about what they felt as far as equity problems. And when you hear these individual children talk, you want to make excuses. You want to say, oh, they're just sensitive, or, oh, they just felt, you know, this happened, here's the reason why it happened. And you want to make excuses for them. But when you're not taking what they say as their feelings and their face value, you're really doing them a disservice. And that's what I'm learning, little by little, even if I don't see it, even if I don't feel it. Somebody mentioned a problem at Mills, and I went back and I asked my son, who had graduated from Mills a couple of years earlier, and I said, did this situation happen at the basketball games? Did this? He's like, oh, yeah. And I'm like, how come you never mentioned it to us? Well, it's just part of everyday crap that we kids do to each other. And I'm like, aye, please, you know, that's not, that's not how it's supposed to be. Another quick story is, I went to school in San Francisco at a pretty diverse school, and we said the same thing. We were on a Facebook page story, and somebody said, you know, we never had any racial problems at Lowell. And then one person started chiming in, well, I saw this. And another person started chiming in, well, I saw that in the drama department. And pretty soon, there's 90 comments from people, and the rest of us are like, really? Really? We didn't see that. But it was there. It's always there. And not necessarily just about race, like somebody mentioned, also the social equity with the seniors-
Ms. Miranda, thank you.
-underrepresented. Thank you.
Mr. Peng.
So first of all, I really want to take the opportunity to appreciate and thank you, Dr. Martin King. Some years ago, he has a dream. And today, I also have a dream. We all should be colorblind. But unfortunately, what had happened is that there are so many things we really should do, but possibly even the biggest politician probably, they don't know what to do, or they lost whatever they want to do. Talking is a lot easier in this topic. Social equity is a huge topic. The only thing is that all this year, and I don't know what actually is like physically like make the equity better. Some years ago, there is a Chinese exclusive law, and until today, Chinese still is so vulnerable, possibly in the news, and you see a lot of the very disturbing video clip. The most vulnerable senior had been pushed, killed in the street. We are so-called, we are in the most developed country. But things, things happening in this country, in the street of this country, is ridiculous. My son was born here. He has to write an article, it's called perpetual foreigners. What happened? There must be something wrong here. So I always watch the time. The time's limited. I mean, is that I really, I really hope everything, either in job, in college admission, in housing, everything, even dining in a restaurant, we all equal as a family, just like Dr. Martin Luther King's dream. So back to this city is that if you form such a subcommittee, I know that you put a lot of effort, Michael, but more is like seeing what you guys is doing. Chinese is a vulnerable community nowadays. Eat in the restaurant and possibly they've been attacked by, yeah, by whoever, by strangers and all that. It happens almost every day. And I don't know whether you guys have some really action items to correct or improve situation like this. I mean, it's the don't talk, right? Talk is, we can talk a lot. But if my son, you know, a late born, still talking about a perpetual foreigners as a high school student at the time, there must be something wrong in this society. All right? So when you run for public, yeah, like position, please keep in mind that you are devote yourself to serve the people. It's not to use whatever to achieve, yeah, whatever your goal is. So anyway-
Thank you, Mr. Peng.
I also have a dream, okay? Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm sorry, I skipped over someone on the Zoom call. City Clerk, if we could have the Zoom person?
Joy Pasamonte Henry, you are unmuted.
Thanks, Elaine. My name is Joy Pasamonte Henry, and I live on Robin Lane. I am speaking here today on behalf of myself, a foreign-born Asian woman whose first language is not English, and a working single mother to three wonderful children who are Asian, black, and Mexican. The December 2022 council meeting, specifically the very orchestrated events that changed the mayoral rotation, bring me here this evening for item number nine. As I look at initial drafts and notes penned and written by myself and other members of our community and the activities I helped with in regards to social equity, I should see this agenda item as a win. Instead, the timing after the December session leave me feeling doubtful, deceived, and cautious about the intentions of the proposed committee. Regardless of the good intentions or reasoning behind what happened in December, a house divided is, well, a house divided. I truly believe our city is in the right direction in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. However, we have a long way to go. The formation of a committee should not be a cause for celebration or an opportunity for anyone to use this as a notch under their belt. In a town where over, where about 10,500 residents are Asian, we still have pockets of people who feel underrepresented and unheard. That's over 10,000 people in a small town of 22,000 residents. About 10,300 people speak a language other than English at home. You only have a handful of Asians speaking up because our community does not stand up easily for fear of disrespecting people, retribution, English as a second language, immigration status, I could go on. The point is that even though only a handful of Asians speak up, it doesn't mean there aren't issues. I really hope this committee will not be another entity to create, red tape, or sadly, to use as a political win. I hope the city, with or without this committee, continues to reach out to our most underrepresented neighbors, to meet them where they want to be met and to truly serve their needs. Trust that citizens such as myself, with some platform and some privilege, will continue to do the work we need to as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pasamonte Henry. City Clerk, anyone else?
We do. We have Margaret Ning.
Ms. Ning, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dear Mayor, sorry, dear mayor and council members, my name is Margaret Feng, and I'm a resident of Millbrae. I do not support the idea of creating the social equity and cultural inclusion subcommittee at the current state. This is not the right time, given what had happened in December mayor rotation. I do not want to see someone use this opportunity as a political gain to further advance his or her political career. Therefore, the subcommittee should not be created now, given the recent mention. I see that the odd of passing the resolution is very high due to majority vote, similar to what we saw in December with mayor rotation. And if the vote did pass, I strongly request this cannot be a self-serving subcommittee. The objective and needs of this subcommittee needs to be driven by a broad-based community input, not controlled by special interests. It must promote cultural diversity and civil engagement. Every district needs to be properly represented with people of color. Every council member would need to be appointing his committee member to the subcommittee. I'm a citizen of color. I would like to see those who have a voice be truly represented, particularly those who work hard to integrate themselves into our beautiful Millbrae community. I believe in hard work with merit. I support poverty-wise, no vacancy tax, nor rent control. As a person of color and an immigrant, I want to see true representation, true equity, true inclusivity, and not allow special political interests to abuse our city resource and use it as a platform for political grandstanding. All these are social values that we need to be truly represented, and I strongly urge the council to consider the above perspective. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Feng. City Clerk, do we have anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Last call for anybody on the phone or on Zoom, and last call for anyone in the room. I'm seeing no hands. The City Clerk is seeing no hands. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for comments. Counsel? I usually look for firsthand first raised, but then I'm going to rotate it around if it's always the same person. So Ms. Cahalan, would you like to go? Oh, Subcommittee?
I think we want to hear from the council, and then we'll comment.
Okay. Subcommittee wants to keep at the end. Go ahead, Ms. Councilwoman Cahalan.
So I think just a little clarification, maybe for the public, is that I believe we're looking at voting on the recommendations that are in the report here today, which the recommendations didn't include the committee or commission. Am I unclear on that?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, folks are talking about the creation of a social equity committee or commission, but I believe that what we are looking at voting on is following through with the recommendations made by the committee on the last two slides of the presentation. Is that correct?
City Manager?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. In which the committee or commission is not in that list of recommendations?
That is correct.
Just clarifying that. In terms of all the recommendations, I think that they are all really significant, important things that we could do. I think overall, I'd like to see more of a cohesive plan rather than just several spotted different activities and events, but really looking at how we can put this together into something cohesive from the research and the community involvement to the action so that we make it not something that's just kind of tokenism, but a real plan and a real action for the community that'll really make a difference. But overall, I think all of the things that are in the recommendations are things that we should do, but just looking at kind of what's the planning, how do we do them, who carries them out? I'm thinking more about those details as we look at how we carry it out.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I agree with that. I also agree with the recommendations. But I would like to just point out that the goal of what this committee could do, or this commission, or whatever it's created to be, is to really do a lot of what we're hearing. I hear individuals talking that seem on the surface that they're at odds with each other, but I don't get a sense of that. I think it's just an opportunity to do just that and focus on what I have here is called reconciliation acknowledgement of the harm that's been done historically. It was already discussed here, some of the codes and the restrictions of homeownership by African Americans, Asians throughout our city. For us to acknowledge it first, because in order to truly heal, you have to acknowledge the harm. And so I think acknowledging the harm gives empowerment to that community. And some of the other things you need to understand is there's a component of listening, the uplifting of one's culture to create space, to create a space for us to have the conversations that we're hearing tonight, for individuals to not be called out, but to be called in. So we embrace and create a space for conversation and dialogue to happen, for that change to happen, for us to educate our youth, but also to educate ourselves. And then also to understand that there needs to be creative and courageous change that needs to happen. That courageous change is going to be you all holding us accountable to make the change that you want. Some may say, hey, let's do it this way. The others may say, do it the other way. But as your city leadership here, it's incumbent on us to work together to create that change in a courageous manner that is respectful and respective of everyone's voice. And so I think that's the true goal and the vision of, in the spirit of what this committee can do. And so I think we have to make sure that we keep that in mind and keep that at the forefront as we have these conversations. Just it's going to be tough to hear individuals speak because we're not listening to understand. We're just listening to react. And so let us try to keep that in mind as we continue to have these conversations because it's not going to end tonight. It's not going to end next month or next year. And then just understand that the ultimate goal is to do what we can for our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, my comments. There was concern about tonight's vote becoming a commission. That's not actually on the agenda tonight. However, with council subcommittees, that means that subcommittees work with the two council members. It's partly because of, well, it's because of the Brown Act. You can't have three or more council members unless you're at a public meeting, and then it's hard to do planning. So as we keep this format, it is still two council members working together to come up with the plan that Councilwoman Cahalan, I think, is asking for, something more comprehensive, maybe a timeline, how are we going to go about doing that? A full commission. If this were to go to a full commission, which is not going to happen tonight, if it would, that would be public participation. If that commission was formed in a structure that ensured that there would be representatives from each of the four, five districts, not an elected official, but a representative of the five districts, that is a way to get more open conversation. Otherwise, when the public comes, they get their two or three minutes, and maybe council has taken notes and can remember to reply back to each public member's concern. And sometimes we're human and we just forget, or we just don't, we don't have our own time to get with that. So again, I would love to see this come back to the city as a commission. Now, I'm going to tell you my stories. I work in the environmental field. I have 40 years in it and two degrees in it. And quite often, what has happened historically in America is communities of color, but not always, not always communities of colors, the low-income, those more socially disadvantaged, live in areas that are unhealthy. You can think of Houston, you can think of the oil refineries and a very large black community. What was there first? Hard to say. A little bit of oil, a little bit of low property values, so the people with fewer socioeconomics have that ability to move in there. Same thing with the Laotian population outside of Louisiana. Same with occasion, a white population in the wetlands where they're oil drilling in Louisiana, which is destroying their entire culture. Let's bring it back to Millbrae. If we were to look historically at Millbrae, we have an east side that did not have the freeway right next to them. But for SFO expansion, the powers that be decided they would move that freeway right next to Bayside Manor and right next to Marina Vista and pretty close to Airport Park. Three of our more- Three of our more-- It's hard to say that any housing is reasonable in Millbrae, because everything is expensive in Millbrae. But by the air pollution alone from the freeway, by the air pollution alone from the airport, by the noise from every transportation agency, the neighborhoods that abut the tracks and are next to 101, and possibly some up by 280, are feeling environmental problems. So in my world, we look at environmental justice as a component of social equity. Now, I understand that the Subcommittee didn't quite make that connection, so I'm trying to make that sell. And the reason I want to make that sell is it has been really hard for Millbrae to get grants to help our residents, because we are not an environmental justice community. We're not, it's a new term now, it's called priority equity community. I can tell you, and I'm not picking on South San Francisco, but they receive multimillion-dollar grants for the gen and tech area, for bike and pedestrian, because they have a small trailer park there. They can use the tools that exist within government to get the grants. So I am hopeful that this Subcommittee will look with an open heart into environmental justice, priority equity communities. In three cases here recently, larger transportation agencies have done environmental impact reports on things happening in Millbrae, and in each case, they have said, we don't have to look at environmental justice. We don't have to look at our environmental harm, because Millbrae is not an environmental justice community. That's high-speed rail. That is frankly even the county, when they were, that wasn't an EIR, but talking about the siding of a halfway house here. And it was definitely on managed lanes, and it was definitely on previous SFO expansions. We need tools in our toolkit that will help all of us in Millbrae protect each other. And that is why I support the recommendations tonight, and I thank the committee for that, but I hope that they will really look at the tools that we need in the city. We have been talking a lot the last couple of years about the tools to make all of us stronger on that. And this, I look at this, it's not so much racial, although historically it has been. It is socioeconomics, and it's giving Millbrae the tools that we can get the support that we need. If you were to look at the paper of what Sacramento is going to be working on, they're going to work on housing. They're going to work on homeless, and they're going to work on mental health, all really good things to work on. But what is not in those top priorities is climate change. And if you were to look at the flooding that we are all experiencing, that is an aspect of flooding. And with climate change, the more we have, the more people will be dislocated from their homes. Their house might get flooded out right here, they're dislocated. Or it'll be people from another country, that their entire country is underwater, literally. So we, to me, we need to start bringing environment into the social equity community. So that is my lecture tonight. Thank you for putting up with me. I am a former instructor. With that, I bring it back to the Subcommittee. Where are you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone who participated tonight. We greatly appreciate everyone's thoughts and everything, and that's what this discussion is about. What wasn't clear from the report, and we apologize, I think, is that in our discussions with other jurisdictions, the most important aspect of putting anything like this together is exactly what we're doing here. And it is not just the speakers here, because it was a limited number of speakers. But what we have learned from the other jurisdictions is that the community determines what needs to be done here. We have heard comments that are very good. I'm sorry that some speakers kind of go after other speakers. That's not what we want here. What we want are, we have, we are so proud of our diversity. We have real people here, real emotions and real experiences. And in order to make Millbrae better, the Subcommittee really wants to recommend that we do the community outreach here. The student outreach was so powerful. I am sorry if anybody thought that that was in any way minimized. That was extremely powerful to many of us. The sad part about this organization or whatever we do here is we do not control the school district, but we definitely know that they have issues that need to be resolved. We can only hope that what we do here positively impacts the community as a whole. Things that were mentioned here that I think are really important are that, you know, language access, resource access. These are the things, those are just two specifics in this discussion here. Redlining has been outlawed, previous code things. I mean, we need to deal with what's in front of us right now. State law does not allow redlining. The county is recording every transfer of property right now, and if anybody doesn't upgrade or do away with those restrictive covenants, we have asked them to notify us so that they are done away with first and foremost. So it is the people here and now which are so important in making this a positive experience. We have, which was not mentioned in the report here, and for my, the Vice Mayor here is relatively new to the community, the Lunar New Year, the cultural programs that we have make us stronger. It's not enough, we know that. But what we need to do, and I think what the Subcommittee really wants to do here, is reach out to the people who don't show up at these events, who don't, we haven't touched on yet, and let them define the goals of what this Subcommittee could be, how we could improve our community, how we could move forward here in a manner that, again, doesn't have people saying, well, you don't recognize this, you don't recognize that. That's not where we want to go here. We want to make this community stronger. We want to make this community more inclusive. We are very diverse, and that is wonderful. But as we know, particularly with our Asian community, it's very difficult, and they have received all kinds of prejudice and bias throughout here, and it's not just the Asians, it's all of our communities, immigrant communities that come here and try to succeed. So we want to be more special to everyone here. And look, I'm a woman. It's like, just being a woman these days, the diversity and the discrimination throughout, we can talk about, you know, Proposition One, everybody's under attack, and we don't want that. We want to bring people together here. So what we had hoped would be in the report is that we would like to do more intense community outreach, let the people decide what direction they would like this group or this Subcommittee to go in so that we can be better. Not that, and we heard several people mention, they don't want this to be a political endeavor. And so we hope that as the Subcommittee, South City brought in someone to actually cultivate more of the community outreach. We have been in various sessions where you actually bring in a company that reaches the people that never show up here, the people that really are concerned about many aspects of this, and believe me, we're all concerned, but reaching those people who never have an opportunity to speak. And that's where you get the purest results. You get the experiences, you get the real truths that are not argued at a council meeting or presented at a council meeting here. So we are hoping, as a Subcommittee, and I don't mean to speak totally for my colleague on the Subcommittee here, but let the community define this. Don't let the politicians define this. Let the community define it, because they are the ones that are so impacted by this. So we can do that in a couple ways, reaching, bringing in someone who is a professional in this area, setting up various community meetings, or, and I would try to encourage, we've talked about this several times, bringing in the company that actually goes to the residents that never participate, and using a study group there and seeing what they would like to achieve. So I hope that clarifies more of what we were trying to achieve in moving forward here, because we can be better, and everyone here wants to be better. But the way to do this is really focusing on the people. Thank you.
Councilman Fung, one response, and then we'll come to you.
Sure. Yeah, just wondering, so if we were to look at the recommendation that was made by the two council members, would you be adding an additional bullet point to encompass what you just stated now? Or would you say, or would you recommend something else?
Well, what was stated in the report is several, kind of all over the different places here. But what we hope is that the community will take a look at the points that have been presented here, and then focus which direction they want to go in here, so that, what we found out from other jurisdictions is that you can't just go off on, you know, all these big, huge things here. If you want to be impactful, the community has to determine which direction to go in and how we can best bring people together and address the issues here. So I'm sorry if that was unclear. Good question as to, you know, what's here, but I think more succinctly that we have to go to the community, show them this report, and say, you know, is this what you're feeling? Is this what you're experiencing? How can we be better? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Fung?
Thank you. Much been said tonight, and this is exactly why we do this, is to get the community involved and getting everybody have an opportunity to speak and tell us what they like to see done. I've taken the opportunity to speak to members of the community here in the last several months, including members from the ethnic communities, representatives from the parents' group, members from the immigrant communities and business community as well. I'm hearing a diverse opinion on if and how this proposed social equity and cultural inclusion committee should be formed and what to focus on. Now, as already been said here, it's important that this being a community-driven initiative here. I cannot stress enough that, you know, we got to reach out to everyone the best we can and listen to their concern, their experience, and to see what areas of improvement that they see is needed and how to go about solving those problems. Another common comment that I've heard over and over again, and it seems to converge around one thing, where while we recognize the broader issue at a national level, the work we do here in Millbrae and the resource that we dedicate and commit to this effort need to focus on issues that pertains to our city and the 23,000 people who live in our city. So as we discuss equity and cultural inclusion here, we need to walk the walk as we talk the talk. So as we reach out to our broader community, we need to also be extremely mindful that we have a sizable ethnic community, an immigrant community where English may not necessarily be their first language. So being able to speak their language and reach out to them, it's our responsibility, because frankly, they all pay their fair share of taxes. And getting them involved in the process is part of the job here. As one of our speakers have already said, we need to meet the public where they are and where they want to be met. So I think this is where we need to go as far as next step, is to reach out, have a robust community outreach effort here in channels of communications that they're accustomed to, and find out what the community like to see done.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. At this point--
Mayor, just a point of clarification. So there is a city council rule, but it's 11 o'clock, so if the council meeting is to extend past 11, there needs to be a motion, a second and a majority vote to go past 11.
Thank you. Okay. So where we are right now is, I didn't hear any willingness to add researching or bringing in the environmental component to it. I would like to see that, but that depends on who's going to make a motion. This is an action item. There is another question that came up. If a survey is used, that the survey questions come back to the full city council. A survey is only as good as the questions you ask, and if you ask certain questions, you're going to get certain responses. So there is quite an art in creating survey questions. So I'm a little concerned without, that some group will go out and send out survey questions, and the full council won't see what those questions are.
I don't want to recommend a survey. What I'm trying to recommend is that there is community outreach, kind of using the points here as a guide, but I suspect the community will tell us what direction they want to go in. I believe, as to what you were suggesting, Madam Mayor, that a survey would just send people off.
I'm not suggesting it's actually in the recommendations.
I understand that.
So if that's out of the recommendations, I'm happy.
Yeah, I'll take it out, definitely. This report doesn't actually reflect the direction we wanted to go in, so.
Okay. Well, so right now, we're trying to figure out what to put into the motion. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I guess maybe we should have some more conversation around that, because that's what I'm trying to get to. What is the recommendations? There's an action item, but we're hearing that things, components that individuals wish were in the recommendation are not a part of it. So if we can flush that out a little bit more, and I just want to stay for the record, you know, typically, you know, if you have a Subcommittee, ad hoc committee, and you have council members on those committees, the purpose is not to lead those committees in a way that you're guiding something. It's, you're there as an observer to provide a sense of credibility to that group that's formed, but the work is done by those individuals. So if we, we're going to have a Subcommittee, an ad hoc committee, and it's made up of community members, those community members will be empowered to do the work. And so it will not be something, and I hope it will not become something, that is a mechanism for individuals to politicize a process. So, but with that said, I do hope that we can spend a little bit more time in trying to flush out what the recommendation is and what it isn't.
You know, this--
Hold on. I'm wondering, Councilwoman Pappan, if we have these bullet points, we've heard from the Subcommittee that it may not reflect everything. What if we go through the bullet points? I'm just trying to keep us, we're at nine, almost 9:30, and we're on Agenda Item 9, so--
Can I please make a suggestion?
Certainly.
Thank you. I would suggest, please, in order to be very efficient here, give, let's continue this matter. Let's make sure the recommendations are succinct for the rest of the council to evaluate and moving forward here, because the most important thing that we were trying to get across here is the community outreach and letting the community define the direction. And that is not in here. Instead of going through the bullet points, I think we can really try to put those in a manner that's more productive here, but again, as was suggested, we don't want to be the ones that tell the public what they want and what they need here. So if we could continue, I think we can be more efficient. We will really tighten this up and come back to you.
Okay. So Agenda Item 15 has a recommended change to the membership of the Subcommittee, so we have that issue for Agenda Item 15, but this is an action item, and what I'm hearing is, we don't do motions to table, but to bring it back, would you be able to bring it back at January 24th?
Yeah, sure.
Would you be able to get it? And staff? Keep in mind that if we have more reins that become more problematic, staff could be pulled in different directions.
Yeah, that's not the issue. But if we get direction from the city council, we can go back and then bring that back to you all, and then if there's a motion to continue, it's a simple motion to continue to the January 24th meeting.
Okay. So I've, where do you all feel on Councilwoman Pappan's suggestion that we continue? Vice Mayor?
I'll second that motion.
No, no. I'm trying to, I'm almost trying to straw poll. Comment?
Yes. I agree that if we can postpone till a future date, but I would not like us to postpone it for the sake of postponing it. So I would hope that there are some-- So I would hope that there are some mechanisms, opportunities that are embedded in this extension that will either promote or elicit comments from the public that will guide us in making a decision at our next meeting.
Go ahead. Yeah, I wanted to be clear here. What we're trying to do is really develop this process and not define the public's participation. What we, well, we want to define how we get to the public, how they determine that, but I thought you were suggesting that we would make those decisions in the next meeting. Okay.
Just if, that there's a, so if the only reason we're extending this is because of time tonight, then I'd say let's have that conversation tonight. If the conversation is extending it to elicit and create more focus...
Yes.
Then let's do that because we had time and focus, I'm assuming from the time that it was, that you were created, from the time you've met over the past few months. And so we had a, we have recommendations here that was supposedly being presented to us as recommendations from that committee. And then now we're saying that it's not clear or we need more time to sharpen the recommendations. If it's only that, then let's have the conversation here. Let's, you know, allocate 20 more minutes, 30 more minutes if needed to try to focus on it. But if that's the only reason, then I don't think I support it.
Councilwoman Pappan, hold on. We have two other council members. Where are you right now on this? I know this is a tricky one for your first night as a council member. Welcome to local government.
I think, I mean, I think we all agree we want to tighten up these bullet points and make them more focused. I, yeah, I think we could go either way in doing it now or letting the subcommittee do that and bring it back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I don't know which would get us to something we all agree upon quicker or more collaboratively.
In some ways, it all depends on the remaining items and how much we all want to debate them. Councilman Fung.
Yeah, so part of the recommendation on the bullet points here is that we will retain some kind of an expert firm, a nonprofit organization to help guide this process through. And I think we haven't had an opportunity to speak to any of those candidates' organizations, and perhaps they can give, shed more lights on how this process could go and have an opportunity for our staff as well as the subcommittee members to discuss these issues with these organizations to get some sort of a framework on how to move forward from here. So we can bring them back after we have a chance to speak to them and bring these proposals back to the council so that we can use it as an action item to vote on it.
Thank you. City Manager, I, I'm torn on this. We've got an hour and a half before the magic 11 hour, and we've got quite a bit of work left to do, and I am not one that wants us to skip council comments because that's our duty to the public to tell them what we're working on on regional committees and local committees. What do you recommend?
Well, I'm hearing two different things, and please correct me if I'm wrong. One is the recommendations from the subcommittee to say, is there agreement to move forward with that community engagement and community outreach, one. The second one I'm hearing is that there's acceptance to that, but let's go a little bit deeper. If the city council wants to find out what really is of issue in the community, then let's go out and do that and then bring the recommendations back to the city council. So that's kind of what I'm hearing, the subcommittee saying, hey, does everybody agree? Let's go do it. And then there's some discussion of, hey, let's go do that now and see how these deeper recommendations transpire when we hear from the community, and then the city council can then take action on that. And then the other thing I hear, and I think this is a good point, is the objective to develop a cohesive plan, right, and a strategic plan. I think that's really what we're after, but we're trying to get what information is important to the Millbrae community because I agree, we have yet to ask the Millbrae community, you know, what their, what their concerns are. We've had some study sessions over the last couple of years, and we've heard from, you know, people out in the community that participated, including our youth, but I do think that there's kind of two different, there's two different approaches here, if that helps or makes it more confusing.
And each approach would say whether it comes back in two weeks or whether it comes back sometime farther down the road. This is what I'm going to recommend. I hear everyone's concerns. I think that we have, we're in the middle of a disaster, a designated disaster right now. I would like to give the subcommittee two more weeks to try to more narrowly focus. I hear the Vice Mayor saying, well, why don't we then do that? But I think that the reaching out to the public cannot be done in two weeks. So let's bring it back in two, this would be my request if someone would consider that motion. Bring it back in two weeks with more defined, looking at the points, what was made there. In two weeks, we decide, basically giving the subcommittee a scope because the scope is very, very broad, and that's what you're going to be bringing to us, and then move into the work that needs to be done with the public. I just can't see the work that needs to be done with the public getting done in two weeks when we're heading off for more rain incidents. I just don't think it's practical.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I don't want to have this debate. I mean, it's at the pleasure of the council, but just...
I've made that request. I've heard one...
I'll make that motion.
One motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second?
With a comment, just to add.
Certainly.
Yeah, just to add that, you know, as far as conversations and opportunities for things to be added, what I heard tonight was adding an engagement of a nonprofit provider to do the analysis or to engage the community to hear from them about their issues. Also to, for Bullet Point 5, establish goals and objectives that would address, and I'd like to say racial, social, environmental, gender, and financial equity, to add those.
Would the Maker accept that?
And if not, make it. You don't have to accept it now, but just consider it over the next couple of weeks.
Please.
And so that, because what I'm hearing tonight when you mentioned environmental, and so if you could take those things into consideration as you narrow the scope and the work to be done, at the very least, those comments are there for us to consider.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, brought up something, and it made me think one additional thing to go into the motion, and I've lost it. I'm sorry.
These are, these are notes that we're going to move forward here. So, Madam Mayor, you could actually just let us know if you had something else you wanted to.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second discussion. I bet you the city clerk is asking us for a much more specifically worded motion, aren't you?
No, I got it.
Okay, oh, good.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want to read the motion so that everybody in the public and on Zoom can hear?
I believe I got it, but let's see.
I can help too if you need me to.
Will do. All right, so the city council would like to continue this item to January 24th, 2023, and to consider adding community engagement, establish goals and objectives regarding social, gender, economic, environmental, and did I miss one more?
Racial and racial, social, financial, and environmental.
Yep, okay. Consider those points into the goals and objectives.
Thank you. Maker?
We can work with that. Let's just go with it.
All right. City Council, we have a motion and a second discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, city clerk, could you please call the rule? Call the vote.
Certainly. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
All right. New, existing business number nine passed by a vote of five to zero to continue the item and consider adding certain goals to...
Excellent. Thank you, city clerk and city manager, for following that conversation. Thank you so much. Moving, moving on to, we are moving forward Agenda Item 15. This is discuss and appoint council members to serve on regional, county, and city boards, commissions, committees, and council ad hoc subcommittees for the calendar year of 2023. This is an action item, and I'm going to preface a few things before we go there. This is the, this has been, this is my second time in trying to do this. The first time, frankly, was a lot easier because we only lost one council member and gained one. In this time, we have two new council members, and all of us come with unique and individual skill sets that would be great in our private and public lives and our professional lives, bringing those. So in trying to balance this, in addition, we had districts. So I am very grateful to the city manager and the city clerk because we tried to look at some of these committees that we've had and say, well, you know, now we've got districts, should they be district representatives in there, or how does it work with existing skills and then existing members? And then I will tell you, there was also the balance of regional committees and trying to make sure that the new members have enough work to do and to recognize that in addition, Councilwoman Pappan has been serving on many, many MCTV boards, and I would like to congratulate Councilwoman Pappan. Today was unanimously reelected to be the Metropolitan Transit Commission's representative for San Mateo County, so congratulations, Councilwoman. And I would congratulate Councilman Fung, who today was elected to the HART board, and if you asked me to ask that acronym, I couldn't do it, but it's one of our housing leadership committees. So congratulations, and Councilman, you can, you can do that. So part of the problem with some of the regional committees is they only meet once or twice a year. So when you look at it, oh, are we being fair to everybody? But if you're on ABAG, which meets basically once a year, that's not a whole lot of responsibility on that. So that was some of the things that we went through in looking at these. And the other thing that you'll see in the agenda packet is that we are hoping that each and every one of us, and in some cases, our residents and, of course, our staff, to get on as many regional committees and commissions because there's a great deal of power and the ability to bring funding back to the city for that. So again, very grateful that we've got some regional representation. With my never existing free time, I do look at this, and that's why we've added a spreadsheet. Poor city clerk is trying to do that when all the reorganizations are happening in every city and every county, and everything is changing and will continue to change for the next month. And there will be new regional opportunities at the Council of Cities Selection Dinner the end of the month, and I believe, I don't look at CCG's agenda, but CCG will also be making some new recommendations because many council members in the county have retired or did not get reelected on that or have been redistricted out of their election. So we're in this very transitional mode right now. So with that, I would like to suggest the following changes to this before we go into discussion. If everyone is turning to their agenda item, it's Page 2, and under committee or commission and committee interview, replace me with Councilman Fung. Under the MSASP West Side Development, which is economic development, Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, West Side Development, replace Councilwoman Cahalan. That's what we were trying to do by districts, and replace her with Councilwoman Pappan. And then under technology, replace Councilwoman Pappan with Councilwoman Cahalan. And Elaine, did I, there was one other that came up in a discussion about MCTV, but assuming that the rest of these committees go, Councilman, I am removing myself from the liaison to Millbrae Culture Arts Advisory Committee, which I adore. I adore them, and replacing myself with Vice Mayor Goodman. And a nice synergy might be, if the council is open to it, is to also appoint Councilman Goodman to the liaison to the Millbrae Community Television because they have an arts component. I will tell you, I've honestly been trying to get a member of MCTV onto Culture Arts Advisory Committee because we could do really more amazing things. And the goal tonight is to try to build on everyone's strength with one last thing. My training and my background is to always replace myself, and sadly, both Councilwoman Pappan and I will be termed out in less than two years. And with the Brown Act, it is very difficult to have two council members assigned to a committee, one's a liaison. We can't let them come to the meeting, which means we can't begin cross-training, which to me makes us weaker in our ability to step forward into a new position when Councilwoman Pappan and I are gone. So part of what I was looking at in this organization was how do we get, how do we spread the work around? And then finally, each one of the council members put their priorities in a different way. So it was like building a house of cards on that. So I hope this is the best as it can. If we go through the years and somebody says, I'm overworked, I'd like to swap something out, if someone is concerned that they were assigned to a committee that has a meeting time that absolutely does not work and there's no good alternate there, let's talk about it. We can bring it back on that. So with that, you have the recommendations in front of you with those changes. Okay, I will hush up, and Councilwoman Pappan?
Okay, so I'm a tiny bit confused. So actually, in the regional appointments here, you have ABAG. Is that appropriate or does they have to? I don't understand how does that work? Does every city have an appointment to ABAG or are they elected some other way?
Every city has an appointment, and then they have their executive committee board, which is what we voted on today at Council of Cities. Sadly, we did not get in there. We will be represented, well represented by Vice Mayor Nagales from South San Francisco.
Okay, thanks for that clarity. And then you just mentioned something about Millbrae TV, and so you have two members.
It's in the wrong category. I asked earlier that MCTV has always been up in the liaison category as opposed to the regional category. So if you look at it on Page 3, it is number eight, and it currently is Councilman Fung.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a committee in, it's not a regional one, right? Correct?
Yeah. However, that said, if anybody has been following MCTV and the collapse of another, a number of regional public televisions, Penn TV has gone out of business, San Bruno Cable has gone out of business. It leaves Millbrae, and Millbrae Community Television has always provided services to a number of other cities. San Carlos has left them, but they provide for Brisbane. They provide, they're working on San Bruno right now. They do two other cities.
San Mateo.
San Mateo on that. And then they, Penn TV used to pick up a lot of XYZ contracts. So again, that whole world is sort of in flux right now. To me, MCTV is a gem in Millbrae. We're a small city with a kick butt cable company, and whatever we can do to try to support them and help them grow, they're also trying to diversify their board, not necessarily Millbrae people, but more board members outside of Millbrae. Maybe that's why it ended up in the regional category, but it's not there.
One more question, please. You, on the city council, regional appointments here, like Basqua and the Water, are we permitted to have alternates to that? I wasn't...
We weren't sure, so we decided to put them as we wait to hear back from Basqua. And apparently, the financing authority is typically the person that is number one. It's kind of, so that's, that's why this is listed like that.
Okay. Did you get an answer from staff? I mean, did you get an answer?
I don't think you can.
You can?
No, I don't think you can.
Okay.
I don't think you can.
Yeah, we didn't. And maybe, we just thought we'd, I mean, we just doing, had it ready in case.
I understand.
We don't believe so, but we're doing our due diligence.
And then you had one item here, San Mateo County City Select Committee. I was surprised to find out you can nominate like the entire council to be your alternates on that one, but you decide, it's just blank right now.
I left, we, Elaine, the city clerk and I had this discussion that we can either create a permanent proxy or, given our schedules, just create a proxy at the time, and I kind of like the idea of rotating it.
Oh, you can, okay, yeah. I mean, I was funny to see that one council just put everybody there. So in case you don't get your proxy in, you might want to just do that, and then you personally can rotate that, but it covers you.
That's actually a good idea. It's just to give us flexibility because life happens.
So I just think the distribution, these are, first off, it's very hard for a mayor to do this. Let's acknowledge this. Having been there, this is always an issue. So as far as my assignments, I'm fine with. Thank you for making the technology change because I don't know anything about technology. That would not be appropriate. And the West Side, I appreciate that as well. So I'll just let the other council go. Thank you.
Okay. Council?
So, yeah, just trying to get some clarification.
So, yeah, just try to get some clarification on a few things here. Number one, I think, what is the East Side Specific Plan? What is that about?
So, two, if you remember, the three of us who were at goal-setting last year, we had a council goal. It was the number one environmental goal to look at the entire east side, really more so the east side of the railroad tracks, and look at the environmental problems there. Actually, it couldn't be the east side of the railroad tracks because Landing Lane has been flooding for decades. So it was to look at that. Now, so that is one of our existing council goals, but hadn't moved anywhere. And then at the general plan, we added a new bulletin point or a new strategic, not a strategic initiative. In the new general plan, there is the creation of an east side specific plan.
There's an actual policy that was adopted by the city council to move forward with creation of an east side specific plan?
So what this committee will do is look at the east side, look at all of the, kind of what you're doing with social equity, look at what should be included in the specific plan, be specific, reach out, meet with the community, find out what problems they're having that we may not be aware of, to make sure that when we hire a consultant to start putting the specific plan together, that we definitely look at these areas. The east side is also complicated by having very large swaths of land owned by regional agencies that, I'll be nice now, are somewhat difficult to work with. And we want to make sure that we've identified all of the players on there. And I am also greatly hopeful, when we get to the website, it's not the other part, but the technology committee, that we get for the first time in Millbrae, some decent maps of our east side. It's very hard to plan for flooding when you don't know where your lowest topography is. And we don't have these tools right now. And it would be for our new city engineer, we just need to give them the tools to better, to more easily and quickly do our jobs. I'm a geographer. Not having these maps has hurt. So I'm looking forward to that coming back or just get us the software. We even had the city, the town of Hillsborough offer to give us maps if we needed help, which is lovely. Thank you, Hillsborough. But we should have our own map, mapping things. We need to know who owns the easements out there, where the endangered species are. There's a bunch of work on this land that greatly impacts our residents out there, too. But I think the east side could become an amazing place. So that's what this subcommittee is going to do. And that's why it's environment, but it's also the district representative for that.
I see. So with that said, I think.
Long explanation. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no worries. But it's good to get that explanation. You know, so in terms of that east side specific plan, and if the goal there is to create a specific plan for the future growth of east side of our city.
Or protection.
Well, growth and protection and all of that combined, right? And as you articulated a bit earlier, that, you know, between you and Councilmember Pappan, it's about two years away for the term. And I would imagine that work could take a bit a while. Would you not agree, city manager?
I'm going to cut in there. What we are doing is identifying what the consultant will work. And then there's a likelihood, possibly that this, like the ad, the social equity sub, council subcommittee would go away because it becomes something else. This is not a permanent committee. This is a committee to look at very specific tasks, get it done. And then, then it goes into the process of every other specific plan.
Yeah, so.
It's not a two-year, it's going to be done. It's going to be done in a year.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, just try to understand, you know, what this subcommittee will do. And I think, you know, the two biggest geographical area between the east side is between D5 and D2, I would imagine. So I would love to volunteer to.
Actually, D5 is not part of this. It's part of the specific, the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. So we will not be able to look at anything on the other side of the High Line Canal. I hear your argument, but it's, city manager, we talked about this. We talked about specifically SFO Site 7. And we can only talk about it because it used to be a wetland and maybe impacting flooding. But we cannot make recommendations to what might happen to Site 7 because that's in the MSASP specific plan.
Which Site 7 are you referring to?
That's the lot that SFO has turned into a heavy industrial construction site.
Next to Aviador, is that?
On the east side of Aviador, east of the Chevron Gas Station.
Yeah.
From Millbrae Avenue.
The site where, you know, mounds of dirt?
Correct.
I believe that's D2, if I'm not mistaken.
That is in, that is D2.
It's in D2.
District 2, correct.
The MSASP.
And the mayor is correct. That is in the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan area. So this east side plan would be north, north of that area.
I see. Okay, fair enough. Thank you. So.
And to be honest, most of east of the railroad tracks is not developable. It's owned by regional agencies. And a lot of that land is owned because of SFO expansion for the public. When SFO expanded to mitigate for their expansion, they had to buy land in Millbrae to keep two endangered species, the red-legged frog and the California garter snake. That land cannot be developed.
Correct.
In fact, we can't even drive our, we have to be careful driving our trucks on the access road because the snakes like to come up there and sun. So it's very sensitive area, which my background is perfect for.
So.
I can see your eyes, Mr. Fung.
Yeah, but yeah, so that's, that's okay. That's fine. I understood. So I just wanted to get some clarification surrounding that discussion and specifically what the subcommittee would achieve. And I think we're working on the, previously, in the previous years, we have this new Public Safety Subcommittee now that used to come from, I think evolved from the Fire Subcommittee. Is that correct? And I believe we've been working on some important initiatives to ensure we got proper representation on our fire board and among other things. I think there is some progress that has been made. And I think that, you know, some, a level of continuity on that subcommittee would be beneficial.
I understand, Mr. Fung, that you would like that position, but that would, the reason I've done this is I serve as our representative to the Emergency Services Council, and I've been there seven years. And I will be gone in two years. And Vice Mayor Goodman is on the San Francisco Board of Directors for the Red Cross, has worked in disasters from Katrina forward. And we have a great deal of work in Millbrae to prepare our residents for a range of disasters, including, we tend to think natural disasters, but airplane crashes. And for all of us that live underneath the runway 19 departures and can't sleep the last two weeks, as the weather is horrible, we have a lot of work. And I want Vice Mayor Goodman to replace me on emergency services. And this is the best way we can transition that.
Okay, well, all right.
Okay, Councilman Goodman, any changes you might like? I'm not sure. Councilman Fung, you're on MCTV. If you want to stay MCTV, that's fine. I don't, I mean, I know that there's, you know, some movements in here. But I also hope that more of our people, more of our council members, will be on more regional committees. Councilman, it was tricky when we were talking about, Councilwoman Pappan, you're on it because of your MTC hat. But Ruben was also on it. Congestion Management and Economic Environmental Quality. I would love to see one of us try, not one of our new members or Councilman Fung, try to be on that. I think what is going to happen, two years ago after the election, there were a lot of empty slots in regional committees and nobody was applying for them. So a number of people got slotted on multiple committees, same person. Or we had two members from one city on these committees. I think now with so many brand-new council members across the county and looking at how many people applied for the HART board today, the position that Councilman Fung was successful in being elected to had five people, five applicants on that. I think it's going to be harder for that. But if we can get people on more of these C-CAG committees, it gives Millbrae a stronger voice. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think, I mean, you mentioned transitioning people in here. And, you know, in the balanced perspective here, you have 14 assignments. So.
And I understand that a lot of those are performed.
Well, I know how passionate you are about some of these. So you just, you might want to consider, because you yourself mentioned transitioning and, you know, you can change some of these things.
I understood. Had a big discussion and we'll see how it goes over the year. But no, I have the 14. I have the time. I'm also well aware that some of our subcommittees didn't meet. And it could be, because obviously people have full-time jobs, I don't. I'm semi-retired. So I have the time. So.
Councilwoman Cahalan, any, anything?
I was going to request the Technology Committee, but it looks like that happened.
I know you wanted it. And it was trying to balance. So I'm really glad that that worked out. Well, it's really because we thought, oh, District 2, and how do we give them economic work? But instead, we might be covering some of that on the east side. In fact, the city manager and I, we talked about it today. How do we balance and make sure more of us are involved on economic vital, economic issues on that? So we think that's how we tried to balance that. So I'm glad you're happy. And I'm glad. I know you have lots of ideas. And that agenda item is coming. Council, Vice Mayor.
I'm here to serve. So I just also like to say that, of my expertise, I have a background, extensive background in public safety with my degree in criminal justice and the work I do on my day job with SFPD. So public safety is important to me as well as social equity and cultural inclusion. I know we're not making a decision on that tonight. But that's important to me with my role as a Diversity Equity Inclusion Chair for the Regional Red Cross and the work that I do there with my consulting job as well. And so those things are extremely important. All the other roles where this council deems my skills are best utilized, I will obviously serve them. But I do want to make sure that the ones that I believe I bring something unique to the table, I want to be able to serve in those roles.
Absolutely. And I have known the vice mayor for a decade or so or more, but I'm still learning new things. He actually is also a performer. We learned that at this amazing event on Sunday, that he has musical family members and that he also has videography experience. Did I call it the right thing? You'd worked, tell a little bit more about that. Which is why when we had a former board member of MCTV come and talk to us about their needs, I thought that that would be a good fit for more east there. But, you know, we can, we can readdress that. I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to help MCTV on that. So trying to incorporate the amazing new backgrounds that our new council members bring to us. So with that, can I have a motion to approve with those changes?
Mayor, may I just clarify for the record, the changes one more time? As I understand it, the commission committee interviews, you will, the change is you're off Councilmember Fung. And then on the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, that moves from Councilmember Cahalan to Councilmember Pappan. And then on the Technology Subcommittee, that moves from Councilmember Pappan to Councilmember Cahalan.
And we did not, I didn't hear anything on MCTV, so we'll let that go at this time. And yes, that's what I have.
And Mayor, what I would recommend, then, those.
Oh, I'm sorry, city manager. Because we have one complication. We have an existing Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion Committee that have not finished their work. So do we need to drop number eight? I would like to keep the choices that I have, Vice Mayor Goodman and Councilman Fung. But we have Councilwoman Pappan and Councilman Fung still working on it. So how should we handle that?
Mayor, that's, that's at the pleasure of the city council. If there's a new member that is appointed tonight, then that new member would pick up the work from the previous committee. And just like land use permits, it runs with the land. So if the vice mayor is now on the Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion, he would just pick up the ball with Councilmember Fung and continue to move it forward.
Okay.
Councilmember Pappan, would you like to finish the work you started?
Yeah, I think that would be.
I mean, again, that's at the, that's at the pleasure of the council. Yeah.
Just postpone the action on that item.
Yeah, you could remove that, that item, and we can bring that back.
You could just postpone action on item eight. You could do that next month after the.
In the motion, we'll, we'll just subtract item eight and continue it until we come back next week. I think it would be better to let them finish where they are and.
And a point of clarification, then. So in, in two weeks, then we'll bring this item back with the item?
Item eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mayor. And so with that, those are the items, the city council ad hoc subcommittees are those that are recommended by the mayor and appointed by the city council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The name change and everything, enclosures.
So move.
Motion by Goodman.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Councilwoman Cahalan. Any further discussion? I did not open this to comments from the public. And Marion has gone. That was our one public comment.
Mary?
Oh, there she is. Marion, I'm sorry, I forgot you. I have a card for you. You're okay?
That's okay.
Do you want to speak?
I just want to say my, my.
My apologies.
That's okay. It happens.
Okay, here I am again. Hopefully, this is the last speak I have. I gotta go home. Anyway, I'm really confused what you guys switch around, do all these things. I only preview what was on the agenda before. So I am a very simple person. I don't really understand many of the subcommittee is four, but there are five of you. And I counted it about 10 committees, subcommittee with two positions for each, so 20 positions. I'm very simple. I did the math. 20 divided by five is four each. And then I would just want to say I respect the fairness, equality among all of you to serve on those committee. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. I wish it were that simple. But then it's how many meetings you meet in a year became another function. It's, it's kind of a fun little math problem. Thank you with that. Any further, any comments from Zoom? City clerk? Okay, the city clerk is seeing no comments on Zoom, closing public comment, bringing it back to council. Any further discussion? All right. City clerk, could you please roll call?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Item number 15 passed by the vote of five to zero with amendment to the Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion Subcommittee, the which will be bringing back another at the January 24th meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, council members. It will be your turns. And all I, someone told me to go, just imagine Mayor Amaranth Lee in San Mateo with four brand-new council members and how much fun that must be. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. And good luck to Mayor Lee. Agenda item number 10, this is the Homeless Pilot Program Quarterly Update. And the city manager is going to introduce our presenter.
I would like to introduce Ms. Barbara Flores from Life Moves to provide a quarterly update to the city council. Ms. Flores?
Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Barbara.
Thank you. So I was taking a minute to load. Apologies. I'm gonna go ahead and load the presentation. One second. Are one of you guys going to be able to load the presentation? It says I don't have screen sharing capabilities.
Yes, we'll.
If we would like to try again, sorry.
Edward, we can bring the presentation up, correct?
I think I'm going to be able to.
There you go.
Great. Sounds good. All right. My name is Barbara Flores. I am the program director for the homeless outreach team. And I'm also covering for Isabella Carabba, our director of Outreach Services at Life Moves, who supports this program. So I'm going to give an overview of, of the program for the past six months. The program has gone from October 2021 through, I know this is September 20, I'm sorry. Thank you. It was September 2022, but it actually just ended in December 31st. This data will be through November 2022, since we have not finalized our December data just yet. So what you see first here on the year-to-date is our. So, what you see first here on the year-to-date is our metrics for the Millbury Outreach Program that's been running for a little bit over a year. Our first performance metric that you see to the left is for unduplicated individuals receiving outreach and engagement services. The goal had been to meet at least 100 unduplicated individuals, so those are individuals that are only counted once. Over the contract's duration, we've met over 173 unduplicated individuals, so no one's counted more than once. This has been pretty impressive for the team. We didn't assume that we were going to meet as many folks as we have, but it's been really great as we've built rapport that more folks are interested in engaging in services. For our second metric, we have 24 duplicated individuals receiving case management services. So, these are folks that we initially meet, and then later on are interested in going onto ongoing services or receiving referrals to other services. So, we have case managed about 32, I can't see the number really well, but 32 folks over the year's duration, and this is intensively, which means usually we meet with them at least once a week, but it could be up to three to four times per week. Our next metric is individuals placed into temporary housing. This is something that has really been a community effort. We had an original metric of meeting 20, or placing 20 folks into shelter, but over the contract duration, we've had over 209 placements. These are placements from everywhere, from detox centers to shelters, and any other place that may, or even inclement weather motels as well. So that's 209 placements overall. Some of them may be duplicated, so it may be folks that entered shelter multiple times. But this usually happens within the hours between like 10:00 and 2:00 in the morning. So, a lot of it is due to the collaboration that the outreach team has built over time with the police departments, with our shelter partners, and other community partners as well. And our last metric is individuals placed into permanent housing. The goal had been 10 for the contract's duration. It has been a little bit challenging, because most of the folks that we engage tend to travel throughout the county and are very hard to continue services for. So, overall, while many people got connected or matched to housing vouchers and interventions, only one was able to successfully go through the whole process. You can scroll down. Here, you're going to find some survey data. So, the outreach workers, as part of their daily routine, when they do engage individuals in the community, they do ask if someone is interested in filling out a quick survey. It's about five questions. We've done about 102 surveys over the past, or over the contract's duration. So what you're seeing on this first one is the first question that we ask is, how did you get to the BART station? Most times, originally, we had thought that most folks are coming from the BART station, which you can see here that they are, the most folks that we interviewed were coming from the BART station, and 37 out of the 102 surveys. But it was also interesting that a lot of folks did arrive there. If you see on, toward the middle, you see like police and other escorts, so they were dropped off there, maybe by another community partner, maybe they were exiting a detox center or a hospital, or there's various reasons. But it was interesting to see that it wasn't just BART, that there was a lot of folks coming from other locations. A lot of folks didn't want to answer that, were unsure why, but it was the third biggest answer that we did receive, followed by bus and caltrain as well. You can go ahead and scroll down. Some of the other questions that we do ask is, what's your city of residency? So this is wherever they are located most of their time during the week. Most folks answered San Francisco, which we originally thought would be the biggest answer that we did receive, or actually, most folks answered South Francisco, apologies, which was different from what we thought, which would be San Francisco. So, most folks, as you can see, 20 out of the 102 are arriving from South City, followed by San Mateo, San Francisco, and Redwood City, some of the highest places where people are coming from. Where do you usually sleep at night is a question we ask, like where do they plan to sleep that night? And it can be where they sleep most nights. And as you can see from here, out of 102, 58 folks answered that they tend to sleep outside. So this could be anywhere from around the BART station to that plaza around where Lenardi's is, it could be anywhere in the community, but they do plan to stay outdoors most times when we initially meet them. And then, we got some smaller answers, but nothing as high as the outside or unsheltered. Please feel free to scroll down. What was really interesting is how the answers changed. So, a lot of these folks that tend to do the surveys tend to engage in ongoing services, so most of the time, that looks like a shelter stay. So here, where you see folks are staying in either South San Francisco, Redwood City, or Burlingame, most times it's because they're actually deciding to take us up on our offer for shelter. So they end up going to either Safe Harbor in South San Francisco, and Burlingame, they tend to go toward First Chance Silvering Station, and then Redwood City, it's Maple Street Shelter. So, most of these folks are actually going into a shelter program or a detox facility. And these other, the other locations are maybe where they plan to go on their own after completing an initial intake or survey. Please feel free to scroll down. What you'll see to the right is how long you've been experiencing homelessness. So again, this is self-disclosed. Most folks answered that they've been homeless for about three years, and that usually tends to be a trend across most programs. But we did see a slight increase in folks from one to three over the past six months. And you can see again to the left that about 35% of the folks that we interviewed have been experiencing homelessness for at least three years. Go ahead and scroll down. So, some of the trends that we encountered as we were going through the last six months of our program is an increase in connection to coordinated entry systems. At the beginning, it was a little bit complicated, because coordinated entry systems does not run after hours or after 4:30, which is the shift that both of the outreach workers for the Millbury Outreach Program work. But with some, you know, collaboration amongst all our other outreach teams that do work during the day, we were able to figure out a way to have them stay at the shelters, and then be able to work with coordinated entry to get these folks assessed as soon as they wake up for the morning to exit the shelters. So, over the past six months, we've had a lot of folks stay at shelters and actually stay to complete a coordinated entry system assessment. This assessment is, does one of two things. It gets them onto shelter waitlists if they're interested in long-term shelter, and it also gets them on housing waitlist that may be available throughout the county at different times, which has been really exciting, because if folks are not interested in our services, they're at least on those waitlists, which can range from one year to maybe five or six years, but they are on that list, which they haven't been before. So it is something that's really positive that came out of our collaboration with the shelters and our collaborations with the county and the coordinated entry system. And then, these are a few more trends that we wanted to end with. So, because of that collaboration that we had with our shelters, with our community partners, and the coordinated entry systems, we did see an uptick in matches to housing interventions. So this could range anything from what people may know as like those long-term vouchers like Section Eight, or what we call permanent supportive housing vouchers now, to short-term interventions. So, within the first six months, we saw about two to three matches, and then within the last six months, we saw about nine matches after June. So that was pretty exciting to see, as folks were getting connected to coordinated entry, that they were actually getting matched. Another thing that we did see is that, we're not sure why, but we did see that a number of individuals who were experiencing homelessness for the first time tripled within the last six months. So these are folks that have never been homeless before. Again, we're not sure why, most folks don't explain what happened, but it is something that we didn't know. And, something that was actually really exciting, too, was that over the last six months, we noted that from June to October, when we were surveying individuals, that nobody had planned to stay in the BART area, which was different than when we first started. Even as Jess, the, we call them the Jesses, because they're both named Jessie, but even when the Jesses are doing outreach within that BART area, they've also noted that they've seen less folks around, or don't stick around long enough to even get engaged in services. So, again, not sure why. It might be a mix of, you know, us being there and our collaboration with community partners, but we have seen less folks in that area. And I think that's it for the overall presentation, unless anybody has any questions on anything that was presented.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Council, questions? And great presentation. Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you, Barbara, and the Jesses. You guys do an amazing job. Thank you very, very much here. You probably can't answer this right now, but at the next quarterly report, and we have the Sheriff's Department here, our new, hello. The impact of the mental health courts is going to be interesting as to how they impact you and your services. And then, secondarily, as we talk in a next budget, or an item here, I think it really would help our community and the coverage within the city. We're seeing a real negative impact on businesses late at night, so the Safeway and the Walgreens. And I don't know if we've discussed with you, trying to have outreach there somehow, but it really has become quite the problem for those businesses late at night. So, just a future conversation, and again, probably with the Sheriff's Department here to see what we can do, because that is really negatively impacting the community and the businesses there. But again, thank you for all you do. I'm curious to see where we move with some of these new laws forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Councilwoman Cahalan?
I just want to say, I've heard several of these presentations throughout the past year, and having worked in homeless services for almost 18 years, I'm just always impressed with the work that Life Moves is doing. It's exciting to see the new partnerships that you're doing with folks staying in the shelters till the morning, so that they can get engaged with long-term shelter and permanent housing lists. And I'm looking forward to joining the homeless Subcommittee, so that I can do more work with you all and get more up to date on what's happening, and looking forward to the future contracts that are coming, and the dispatch component that I think is going to address some of the concerns that we've heard from public comment, and that Councilmember Pappan just brought up about our businesses in the evenings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to congratulate you for coming up with that amazing workaround, that the fact that the office, if I'm calling this correctly, the entry system, they don't work after 4:00 in the afternoon, so great job in coming up with that. And I think you will enjoy having our new team working on this. Couple, kind of to build on what Councilwoman Pappan said, what I hear from residents is they want to help the people they see, but in this case, the potentially unhoused are not at the BART station. And this might be a question for the Subcommittee, when, and I always thought it would be great if we had cards that we could give to somebody, or whatever we can give to a homeless person when they're away from the BART station, away from the Life Moves professionals, what can we do to help connect them in? Because, you know, we are seeing them at Walgreen, maybe the ones at Walgreens at night are not the ones that are open to that, but I know that we see people in the Safeway parking lot usually asking for food, and I think our public wants to be part of the solution. So, if you can consider how we might do that in the future, but, and if it's something else, I add a bunch of phone numbers to the back of my business card, so when I meet people, I circle it, and hopefully, they have the ability to make a phone call, they may not. But if you guys could think about that, that would be great. And congratulations. The sheriff has left us after many hours with us, but she gave a huge shout-out to you at her inauguration on Saturday, and it was lovely for the city of Millbury with our partnership with Life Moves and the county to be recognized. Thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, this is an informational item. Thank you so much, be safe. Moving on to the next item, this is agenda item number 11. This, resolutions to approve a grant agreement between the County of San Mateo and the City of Millbury to receive funding in the amount of $372, and to approve a related contract with Life Moves to provide rapid response outreach and engagement services for unsheltered and homeless individuals in the amount of $470,572. This is an action item. And I believe we have our Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director, Isabel Carlos. Please go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, yes. I'll be presenting the item, City of Millbury Homeless Engagement Local Program. And in the interest of time, I'm going to fast-track my presentation here. If you'll go to Slide 2, it shows the agenda for this evening. And if you go to Slide 3. In 2021, the city, the County of San Mateo and Life Moves, as you just heard, with the assistance and collaboration of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and the Central County Fire Department, piloted a program to provide real-time response services to unsheltered individuals that arrived through the BART and other transportation systems from cities all around the San Mateo County and the region. The pilot program, through a contract between the county's Human Services Agency and Life Moves, provided the services, and in the first year and a half of operation, as you heard, it was successful beyond its original vision, not only meeting, but exceeding the original goals. As you can see on the screen, the original goal was to provide 154 interventions, and the services provided as of November 2022 were 415 interventions. And also, as you heard, the pilot program is set to, or ended, on December 31st, 2022. Next slide. Under the direction of the city's Homelessness Subcommittee, city staff applied for grant funding through the county's Working Together to End Homelessness Innovation Grant Program, which supports the piloting of bold, innovative, and replicable approaches to assisting the 1,092 unsheltered residents of San Mateo County. The grant application scope was specifically to continue the services provided under the original pilot program with a requested amount of $370,572. And on December 13th, the County Board of Supervisors approved the city's grant application and authorized an allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds, also known as ARPA funds, under the Working Together to End Homelessness Grant Program to fund the continuance and the expansion of the city's original pilot program, now under a program name, Millbury Help. One of the recommendations at the end of the presentation will be to approve a resolution and the related agreement to receive those funds. Next slide. This slide shows the purpose of HELP, which is to provide rapid response outreach and engagement services to individuals experiencing homelessness with support services, and it has a list, temporary shelter and permanent housing services, transportation assistance, vouchers, mental health, detox and rehab referrals, and other supportive services such as ongoing individual case management, which is what really makes the difference with this program, the ongoing case management. And it's going to provide for services in the daytime and also nighttime hours. Next slide. One of the differences between the pilot program and the new program under HELP is that the service area will be expanded to cover not only the Millbury BART station and transit area, but also the surrounding downtown areas. Next slide. And this shows the performance measures committed under the grant application. The city is very confident that it can reach the goals, because the methods and the project of- The city is very confident that it can reach the goals because the methods and the project delivery will be the same as with the original pilot program, wherein the, the, the metrics were not only reached, but exceeded. Next slide. And this slide shows the, the details of the project budget. And I'm going to bring some highlight to the, the term, which is on the right side of the slide here. It covers a period of 18 months, starting January 1st and ending on June 30th of 2024. The funding sources with the county grant agreement bringing in $370,572, the city would contribute $100,000. And the city would also contribute in-kind contributions of $42,468, which is primarily staff time assisting with the administration, the, the fiscal duties and equipment supplies, the facility that the, the case managers would, would use is covered under that cost. The total project cost is $513,041. Next slide. So in order to continue the pilot program under HELP, city staff is recommending an agreement for professional services with Life Moves. Life Moves is a reputable organization that operates 27 facilities across San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties. And because the original model, which included them as a service provider, provider was so successful and they provided the support services for the homeless population in Milbrae with the pilot program, we are again recommending that they become the service providers under the new program. Next slide. To conclude, the staff recommends that the city of, city council approve resolutions for two agreements. One, an agreement, a grant agreement between the county of San Mateo and the city of Milbrae to receive funding in the amount of $370,572 for rapid response outreach and engagement services for the unsheltered and homeless individuals. And an agreement for professional services between the city of Milbrae and Life Moves to provide those services and, and that contract amount is $470,572. And also to authorize the city manager to execute both agreements. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Questions from counsel? Mr. Fung?
Yeah, City Manager, if you can help articulate a little bit, you know, just Councilmember Pappan brought up a little earlier with regards to the evening hours and how we see a certain amount of unhoused population camping next to Safeway, some of the evening establishments, grocery stores, and how we could also at the same time provide maybe perhaps any plans to have a hotline type facility where members of the public or business owners can call into should they see activities that would require assistance.
Yes, Mayor, if I may. So part of this program in, in the pilot program with Milbrae and Life Moves is starting to get a lot of attention countywide. And so not only Milbrae, but city of Half Moon Bay and Redwood City also applied for similar grants. And all, but all three cities had requested some type of a dispatch element to, to the grant. And so it was decided that under a separate grant that Life Moves applied for, that the county would fund Life Moves for that dispatcher. So as part of this program, Milbrae, Redwood City and Half Moon Bay will all share a dispatch service from Life Moves, but that will be under a separate grant. So we will work, you know, with Life Moves regional wide, but specifically to Milbrae to get that dispatch contact number. The question is, what, what's the availability of that, of that dispatcher at this point in time? And we're going to continue to evolve that. I think that's a work in progress. So I don't have an answer to you tonight. But we will bring that back to the city council and obviously then to the community with the availability of that dispatcher. And I think as we continue to grow and expand the program, that 24/7 availability is absolutely key.
Excellent. If, all you have to do is flash me, I, so I know if you have a question and then I'll go back to Councilwoman Pappan. Go ahead, Ms. Councilwoman Cahalan. Oh, you're good. Okay. I'm trying to learn how to read your face. Councilwoman Pappan, please.
Thank you. As previously noted, I hope we can expand to cover the downtown late at night because our businesses are really being negatively impacted. And I think that will be best served by coordinating with the businesses because they can tell you exactly what time these things consistently happen. And also the Sheriff's Department. So that, that would be helpful. Because the last thing we want is one of our businesses closing due to these. But I seriously have been in there late at night and people just come in and take stuff and leave. And we, we can't have that. So something, I hope we can develop something, a bit of an expansion as to when some of the unhoused come into our business area and especially those two businesses which are open late. Thank you.
And I have some update on that. So we did request a third social worker from Life Moves for the downtown. It was not funded by the county at this point in time. However, there is other grant funding that's becoming available that we will reapply or that we will apply for, for that third social worker. So that's on everybody's radar. It's on the county's radar, Life Moves radar, of course. And, and so we will, we will be competing for that grant.
If we could kind of define exactly when this happens and, you know, it might make it easier for the grant. Just in the impact, because I'm sure they can provide, the businesses can provide losses and let you know, you know, if one day is better than, or more activity than the other in certain timeframes. Thank you.
Yes.
We ordered new microphones because, you know, it's a problem. Unfortunately, they didn't come in. We thought they'd come in by this meeting, but they are on their way. So help is on the way.
Go ahead, Assistant City Manager.
So to just reaffirm what I said, that we did apply for the third social worker, but it was not funded. But there is grant opportunities that are coming up that we will apply for it. But working with Life Moves, they, they understand that, you know, as the presentation was previously, that there is spillover. You heard that they're seeing less unhoused at the BART station. I think that that has to do with the development project. So less house, less unhoused at the BART station, but just as many throughout the city. So I think, I think they're being kind of pushed out, but, but they're still here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Elaine, do we, city clerk, do we have anyone on Zoom, public, opening for public comment? Any members of the public?
Currently, there are no.
All right. Closing public comment, bringing it back to counsel. Any further discussion or motion? This is, this is an action.
Move approval?
Have a motion from Councilwoman Pappan, seconded by Councilwoman Fung. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Voting on both resolutions at the same time.
Yes, sir. Exactly as I read. No changes to the.
Okay. Councilmember Pappan? Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Agenda item number 11 passed by the vote of five to zero.
Okay. Next up is one I know staff is so excited about. I am excited. Our committees are excited. Please give us a report on the new city website, and this is an action item.
So if I introduce Justine Bleeker at PIO, or we can go right to Mr. Solomon Grover, who is the account executive with the firm Civic Plus. Thank you. Mr. Solomon.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, just joined as a panelist.
Go ahead, Mr. Grover.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and counsel for letting me attend tonight. We're really excited to talk about the website too. Just, you know, briefly, huge kudos to the staff on working and building it to this point. Working with Elaine and Justine as well, and they're, they're just great to work with. So in the interest of time, would it be all right if I shared my screen and just showed a quick? Okay. All right. So I actually had a co-presenter, but he's, he, he's not very good at staying up late. So it's just going to be me tonight, but I'm your liaison between Civic Plus, the website. Yeah, Cooper's great. He gets me out of boxes. So when we started looking at the project itself, these were some of the bullets that we really wanted to accomplish as the end result. So I like beginning with the end in mind. When you're looking at like, what does Civic Plus bring to the table? You know, that top number partnering with over 12,000 local governments, I'm really proud of that. We've actually started focusing instead of just the website or just, for example, you guys have Civic Rec, so just Parks and Rec. We started looking at the experience and the path between citizens and getting the information and staff and pushing the information out. And so we started down the path of the civic experience. So all of these are actually platforms that we have. And currently you guys have quite a few different platforms with us, which is great because that's going to lead to a more seamless experience for both, for both sides. So an example of that, Port Orange, Florida, they actually have five different platforms with us. And we work really hard to make it all be a seamless and personalized experience. So we can actually see three things here. The agendas and, and being able to search and have all the things just happen automatically. Spartanburg County has similar actually platforms to the city of Milbrae. This is Civic Rec and the website and the accessibility in one page. So I actually started in 2015 with Civic Plus, and this is what a lot of local government websites look like. Just really billboardy. I was told that that's where people would go to call or to find the number to call for help. They wouldn't really use the website very much. But we have a, a process where we redesign sites every four years. So this is their newer Civic Plus site. Very actionable, mobile first, very easy to use. And then departments have their own landing pages as well. This is the police department. And as you can see, the graphics and the menus kind of change. So we're talking about a custom website that's really going to showcase the Milbrae community. And not just websites, but also all these other modules are built into the CMS in the backend to help staff. So when we're looking at a project, we really want to take a concierge approach for staff and to give them time back. And ultimately, the reason that we do all of the stuff that we do in the projects are to bring a, a better experience in interacting with each other and be in that, really that trusted source of information. So when we're looking at the personalized and frictionless experience, that's, that's really our end goal. So here's just a couple of before and afters. Here's San Leandro before Civic Plus. Here they are after. As you can see, the mobile views there. This is just really quick. We have this alert center built into our CMS as just part of the website where they can send out emails and text messages to people that have subscribed to this feature. So this is something that's coming to the city as well. This is Capel, Texas, and they really wanted to revolutionize all their departments. So this is their new site here that I'm kind of scrolling through. You know, very graphically rich, again, mobile responsive. Here's Capel's police department. Here's their Parks and Rec department. And it's important to know that all of these departments are feeding into each other and enhancing the experience and really just making it a better overall presentation of the city online. So there's a lot to kind of throw at you at this time of the evening. But ultimately, we're really super excited to dive into this and to just reimagine City Hall. What questions do you have from?
Thank you. Justine, did you want us to ask questions now or did you want to do a, a portion and then have us ask questions?
I think if you guys want to ask questions, I think that's fine.
Okay. Counsel, questions? Councilwoman Cahalan?
Thank you so much for your presentation. And I had a chance to look at some of the other cities in San Mateo County that are using Civic Plus. I had a few techie questions. The emergency alert, that's SMS and emails? And then is that expandable? Like if we wanted to use it for general newsletter purposes? Or is it better keeping that focused just for emergency situations?
The beautiful thing is it's an unlimited amount of categories that you can create. I've seen them be neighborhood-based even. So neighborhoods can create their own subscribable category and get updates that way. So newsletters, press releases, even when there's new bids that are coming out. All of these can be subscribable and pushing out alerts to everyone.
That's great. Also, I saw that, you know, when we have multiple components, whether it's the newsletter signups or permitting online or recreation online, that it'll be a single sign-on for the users. On the backend, is there like a CRM component so that, you know, the staff can look at residents as a whole and see that whole picture of their involvement with the different components?
Yes.
Okay.
So CClickFix is a CRM. There's also a, a level of that with the, the CMS or the website portion. So you're going to have a, a really great experience on seeing the history, on a location or residence. And, you know, thinking about the single sign-on, you had mentioned that is so really pretty cool and kind of a next level local government experience. When I can go in and manage my Civic Rec activities and then jump over to fill out a form on the website and it remembers all of my information that I've already put in. So that's great for citizens, but also it's single sign-on for staff too. So when they're jumping between the two different platforms, they won't have to re-sign into things. They can just drop down, jump into CClickFix or Civic Rec or manage their website.
I have one last question. I think sometimes there's great benefits to managed packages. And then sometimes a challenge with managed packages is working to make sure they're sustainable into the future and don't become a legacy product. So could you just say a little bit about what you're doing with sustainability with Web 3.0, with transitioning from cookies to what's coming next and those types of things?
Yeah, so that's, that's an interesting question. I got to say, I haven't had that one too many times. So that's a great question. But I will say that we invest just, I, I don't know the actual number, but I know it's, it's over a million dollars a year in R and D and what local gov technology means next year and the year after. And that's what we're building for now. So we have a good idea of where it's going. And we have a client advisory board that we're running this roadmap through to make sure that some industry leaders are looking at it and saying, yeah, we, we think that's right too. So it's an informed kind of a process. But, you know, we give you a really great platform, but it's empowering staff to be able to have it be an ever-changing thing instead of just a static, you know, I don't want to reach out because I don't want to wait two weeks to get it changed. They can go in and change it easier than sending an email asking for help. So it, it's going to be a living, breathing thing. And on top of that, every four years, we're going to come in and totally reimagine the site as well.
Thank you very much. It's an exciting product and I think, as you can see, I'm a bit of a techie. It's an exciting product, and I think, as you can see, I'm a bit of a techie, so I'm excited about all the things we're going to be able to do to bring more outreach, communication, and personalized engagement with our residents. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, my comment, first and foremost, I'd like to thank staff for their support in answering this question for me. So this is really for my colleagues and for the public. And this is around the conversation of expandability and then also being able to utilize the C-click Fix and probably create a C-click Assist for support of what we just heard prior with Life Moves and being able to connect our residents and our local businesses with the support services of Life Moves through a C-click Assist component.
Is that a question for me?
Yeah. Is that something that we could do? Like, Life Moves is a partner of ours.
Yeah.
And so by creating that component, is that something that we could expand? And probably while we don't have, we might not have, we're going to obviously have, we don't have 24-hour coverage for a dispatcher, but we could probably utilize C-click... ...dot-dot-dot to support that need.
Yeah. The answer is, the quick answer is yes. Maybe a broader answer is yes, and we also work with communities like Portland, Oregon, just tons of other communities around the country that are battling these same issues and trying to find that magic bullet that's going to be good for both, you know, interactions, both sides of it. So we're going to be making those recommendations and showing you how other people are using it on top of also just, you know, really utilizing the platforms that you already have.
Thank you.
And I think, if you don't mind, I can add and correct me if I'm wrong, Solomon, because I'm going to quote Brian here. But from the C-click Fix, we can actually embed one request. So if we have our Unsheltered Individuals page where we're listing all of our information and outreach material, we can embed that request onto that page specifically, so it's all in one spot.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you, staff. I have what's going to sound the dumbest question up there. I liaison to two now one committees that have had to move their operations off-site from the city's website because it didn't have the capacity. But with this new tool, will they be able to, how will it work? Will they write, will Culture Arts, who has a list of all the artists who might want to present at the art show and then they want to show the website? How will that work? How will, will they be able to post? Does the city want them to post? Or does the city still want to be the gatekeeper for our committees and commissions? And if now is not the time to go into it, will we have a process so that each of our committees and commissions can say, I wish I could do this? I will tell you, with Culture Arts, we had a former committee member who researched all kinds of art, and we had to share it on our phones at a meeting instead of being able to put it all on one website and look at some of the great things cities are doing all over. So it's not something we're necessarily doing now, but something we could be doing. And then for community enhancement, both the Adopt a Spot program, but also they do the awards for civic engagement, the holiday tree, the holiday lighting, the Halloween lighting, other tasks like that that are trying to get the community to do more beautification is one of a word on that. So how do, and tell me, and we're getting late, I'm going to have to ask for an extension. Just tell me how our committees might be able to help in the process and get tools that they can use. And finally, will our GIS mapping system be able to actually show the true noise contours that the airport does not show? And I know it's going to take us some work to do, but will it have that kind of ability?
Yeah, so I think the short answer to that, and I'll look to Solomon, but it doesn't have the capacity and the bandwidth to add those functions in enough capacity to add everything that the city needs. And I think the answer is yes. The problem is, and I think this may have been the point from Councilmember Cahalan, is, yeah, where are we going to be as we add? Because we know right now the software that the city purchased, you know, 15 years ago is at capacity. And so I think it does have all of that capacity to accommodate all of our committees, subcommittees, art shows, you know, current events, everything that's going on and showcase that, so.
Excellent. City Clerk, do we have any public comment? I don't want to sound like you're rushing. We have been waiting for this a long time, Mr. Grover, and to staff. So it truly is exciting. It's just getting late.
There are no public comments.
And I see no public comments, so I'm going to close public comment. If there's no further discussion, if we could have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fung, seconded by Cahalan. City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Very glad to. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
And this is the direction to move forward with the website project, and it's approved by 5 to 0. Thank you so much, Solomon.
Thank you, staff. I know you have also been having to work with a really old tool. So I think it's going to make us so much better and so much more responsive to our public. Welcome. Welcome aboard, Mr. Grover.
And Mayor, just a point of clarification on this item. So the next meeting, we will be bringing the contract back to the City Council for approval.
Very good. Now, I am sorry, public, we are going long. We have a rule that says we have to extend contract. If I could have a motion to extend, we have two more items. And then I hate, I do want any of us who have had meetings that are critical to report out. So a 30-minute extension?
I will make that motion if we could keep the public, or council comments to the three-minute limit. That'd be great.
Very good. Thank you. I need a second. Second by Vice Mayor. Please call the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The meeting time is extended for 30 minutes by approval of 5 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, staff. Agenda item number 13, this is another really exciting item. Resolution amending the 2022-2023 adopted budget and approve consultant surfaces agreement with Gates and Associates for the Bayside Manor Park and Marina Vista Park upgrades project. This is an action item. And we have our new public, City Engineer and Public Works Director, Sam Batista.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Sam Batista, your new Director of Public Works. Anyway, lucky item number 13. This is a very exciting project, so I'm going to introduce this project. It's the Bayside Manor Park and Marina Vista Park Upgrade Project. And tonight, we also have Casey Case from Gates and Associate on Zoom. So it's next. Okay, so just quickly, the slide just shows what we're going to be talking about tonight. You know, just briefly, the location, project details, talk about the consultant, and then the project process, recommendations, and then a short questions and answers session. So as you know, the Marina Vista Park and the Bayside Manor Park are located in east of Al Camino Real, and Marina Vista Park is located at the end of Spruce Street. And Bayside Manor Park is located at the end of Loretta Avenue. So just in short, the project details, I'll go over this more in-depth in a later slide, but mainly, the project is to upgrade the parks to increase capacity. And as you can see from these pictures of the park, they're very basic parks. And, you know, one of the ways that we can increase capacity is by, you know, creating multi-use courts such as, you know, restriping the basketball courts and adding in pickleball courts, you know. But part of this project is actually listening to what the residents have to say. We really want to have a lot of, you know, we want to give the residents an opportunity to give their opinions and their input for this project. So I will get to that later in the slides. But the staff issued a request for proposals to our on-call, our three on-call landscape architect firms, and two firms provided proposals to the city. Staff conducted consulting interviews in which we determined who would be best suited to take on the project. So during that, during the interviews, we, staff chose, got Gates and Associates based on their experience and their project understanding. So they do have relevant project experience. They have designed an all abilities playground over in Dublin. They also have done park rehabilitation projects in Santa Clara. And most importantly, they work for the city. They assisted the city with the Millbrae Central Park project. They have a good project understanding. They understand that the city and the community have high expectations. They want to deliver this project, you know, on budget and on schedule. And they are committed to providing a quality project for its residents. So here is our project process map. So going, you know, just going over this, in step one, it's just pretty much the project initiation, the project kickoff. It's kind of like our housekeeping, making sure that the lines of communication between the consultant and the city are, you know, we develop the rules. And so with that, after we do our kickoff, we'll have our consultant go out there and do a site assessment and do topographic surveys to truly find what's existing in the field. And then they will also interview our staff to determine whether or not they're, you know, what types of problems or issues are out at these existing parks so that we can try to address them during, you know, during the upgrade. And we'll also gather other data like soil reports and geotechnical studies. So from there, we are going to go out to the community and do a robust community engagement process. And we intend to, you know, go, we'll be out there at the parks in person doing pop-up events as well as, you know, online surveys so that people throughout the city can participate in upgrading this park. So, you know, we definitely will be doing a mailer to the different neighborhoods and make sure that they, you know, know that there is this engagement that we want them to participate in. So as we go through this, through this process of gathering comments from the residents, we will also incorporate it into this conceptual plan, you know, because we want to see what we could fit into this plan and see what, and put the amenities they want onto this map. And then we'll be presenting that to the Park and Rec Commission, and we'll be getting comment from them. And then also coming back, incorporate their comments, and then eventually make our way to City Council to have, to receive your comments and also more public comment. And by then, we should have a conceptual plan that is finalized, and then we will go into the next step, which is to do a final, go into final design. So during that time, during the final design phase, we will be literally designing and preparing the construction drawings. And once the construction drawings are reviewed and at 100%, then we'll go out to bid. And once we go out to bid, we'll find, you know, the best qualified, lowest responsible bidder. And then we'll come back to council to award the contract and then go into construction. So this slide just shows you a sample project schedule. And really here, I just wanted to emphasize that the planning and design phase, which includes the community outreach, prepare the conceptual designs, and the construction drawings could take up to a year, 12 months. And then construction would take about 18 months after that. So the recommendation for this is to adopt a resolution amending the 2022-2023 adopted budget utilizing and allocating park impact fees to the project budget and approve an agreement for professional services with Gates and Associates for the Bayside Manor Park and Marina Vista Park Upgrade Project. So with that, that concludes my short presentation. And Casey Gates and I are available to answer any of your questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions from council? Ms. Pappan?
Okay, real quick here. So can we post on the parks themselves that this process is happening? Because people in the neighborhood walk by. So it might be a good way instead of them ignoring their mail, which happens. And then secondarily, what I've noticed out there, too, and what the neighbors have said, is that there's illegal dumping that occurs. So in contemplating whatever park improvements here, let's be aware of that so that this work is not diminished in any way, shape, or form by people continuing to dump in that area. That'd be great. Thanks.
This is a question. SFO has used Marina Vista Park as its operation center. Are they out, and did that work of piling everything up there damage the basketball court? Or anything else?
From what we, from what we saw, we haven't seen any, like, true damage. But this, that is an issue that we will be looking into because we understand that there's going to be heavy equipment if they have to do some maintenance in the Lomita Creek or whatever. But we are, we know that whatever we design needs to be able to accommodate large equipment.
Okay.
You know, but of course, at the same time, make it look nice, a nice park. Correct, Casey?
Sadly, sadly, that neighborhood has lost its park, but we have benefited by not flooding. The staff report says that you would resurface the playgrounds, but looking at the photographs that you showed, are they beyond resurfacing? They look in pretty bad shape. And the last time I've walked, especially Marina Vista Park, it looked, the surfaces look like they need a lot of work.
There's, there are ways of reusing that surface and, you know, like, doing a...
Slurry seal?
Oh. Remove the surface and then resurface. So it's almost doing an overlay over the, over the basketball court and then putting acrylic.
Okay. Just make sure that we're not, that we're doing it the right way, even if you have to come back to us and ask for more money. And then, Ms. Case and Sam, we haven't had a chance to talk airport. Bayside Manor and Marina Vista are very noise-impacted, and the Managed Lane Program reduced vegetation, and vegetation can absorb low-frequency noise. The new freeway is rubberized asphalt, I think, although they wouldn't provide me data. I asked about noise before and after. But I think vegetation is critical in terms of quality of life for both neighborhoods, but also for use of the park. And the trees there are straggly. I'm aware that one of the neighborhoods is very sensitive to trees because a young man committed suicide, so they kind of are anti-tree. But certain trees can help with the noise and help make the experience at the park better. So I hope, Ms. Gates, and you can consider that the parks are in a very impacted area and how we can try to make those incremental improvements. And I cut myself in, I didn't know if any other council members, I didn't see any other hands. Okay, in which case, this is an action item. If I could have a, and I don't see any public comment, motion to approve.
Solomon?
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? No further comments? City Clerk?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
New business item number 13 passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, staff and to the neighborhoods. Final agenda item, agenda item 14, accept by motion, the annual comprehensive financial report for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. And we have our finance director, Mike Sung. And welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members. So today we'll talk about our annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the ACFER. Most people are kind of asking, what is an annual comprehensive financial report? Basically, our annual report is a detailed report of our actuels for our previous fiscal year. This is in regards to fiscal year 21, 22. In comparison, if we're looking at like our budget, that's actually a plan forward. So a budget is a plan forward. The annual report just reports out what has actually happened so you can see what we planned for and what actually really happened. So this is all guided through GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, and we use the generally accepted accounting principles when we're going through these reports themselves. What the annual report really is, is it reports out the basic financial statements for an entity. This would be government-wide statistics as well as funds, financial statements and notes to kind of explain what's going on with the city's financial and fiscal health as well as statistical data and it includes some financial trends as well. This is verified and reviewed by an independent outside auditor and they report out any of the findings, if they find anything. So fiscal year 21, 22. A very brief summary, our net position increased by almost $9 million. That's mainly in capital assets, that's lands, building, equipment. Along the way, we've also had the cities funded the construction of the Millbrae Recreation Center through a variety of different methods, including proceeds from insurance, grants from the state, donations and special funds such as the park development impact fees. Our enterprise funds, capital assets, they increased by about $5 million. It's about $900,000 in storm, 2.3, I believe, in sewer and 1.9 in water. Primary revenues, so a bit of good news on the primary revenues for last year. They've increased from our pandemic lows of fiscal year 2021, especially in transient occupancy tax in TOT. Our actuels for TOT in 2021 was about 2.3 million. In 2122, it effectively doubled, actually more than doubled to about 4.9 million. So the recovery is happening at a pretty moderate pace. So we've also had increases in sales tax as well, which is rather close to pre-pandemic numbers as well. So also our pension liability has increased and that's been a combination of two different things. One is that the discount rate has been lowered from 7% to 6.8%. Also, we've absorbed a negative return in fiscal year 21, 22 of negative 6.1%. The previous fiscal year in 2021 was actually a, a better year in which the returns were about 21.3%. In effect, if you didn't count the discount rate, they kind of negate each other in that sense. Other employment, post-employment benefits or OPEB, otherwise known as retiree healthcare, that liability has decreased. The city has set up a Section 115 trust. What that allows us to do is, it basically allows us to plan for these future larger payments out there. This does work very well with our investment policy because it's kind of outside. These are longer-term liabilities that we have and it complies with our state guidelines. So in summary, and I'll stress, we received an unmodified opinion with no findings. That's good news. You don't really want any findings. You want the auditors to thoroughly look through and make sure that you're doing everything correctly. And if you're fortunate enough that there's no findings, your internal controls are generally pretty good. You want to maintain that. We still are affected by COVID-19. I mean, our parking tax and transient occupancy tax aren't back to normal yet. Our transient occupancy tax at its height was about 8.9 million and for 2122, we received about 4.9 million. This year in fiscal year 2223, we're projecting out in the budget that we'd get back to about 7 million. And this was before measure N passed, increasing the TOT from 12 to 14%. So the recovery is quite there. TOT rebounds in correlation with the airport and San Francisco is unique in a sense that it has a higher rate of international flights as compared to the average international airport. So most international airports are about 15% international, 85% domestic. San Francisco is about 26% international, 74% domestic. So the domestic traffic came back a little bit faster as San Francisco is kind of a hub to the Pacific and some of the Pacific countries were a little bit slower to open up. You're going to see that it's starting to recover more as the Pacific countries open up at a quicker pace. Also, we were fortunate enough to receive federal grants in the form of the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Not only did we receive ARPA funds, but the county received them as well and obviously we're applying for a grant from the county for additional ARPA funds. But we received ARPA funds in two tranches. That totaled 5.4 million. We received 2.7 million in fiscal year 2021 and then the second half in fiscal year 2122. And that's helped out a great deal in mitigating some of our large revenue losses. The city continues to reduce our expenditures via combination of our measures and this was pretty evident. We've conducted a hiring freeze, spending reduction. We've used a lot of restricted funds that qualify for these qualifying projects and we've continued to defer non-critical capital projects. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Sung. It's always great to be the last one on this topic. I see Councilwoman Pappen, anyone? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the written materials here. What I would like to focus on without getting too in-depth here is the street resurfacing like one mile. And I know the previous council really was trying to focus on doing that. And in addition to that, which was quite disturbing are the water main breaks. We went from 2021 with eight and now 2022 was 20. And we've heard from the residents even tonight, the cost of their water bills. And we all know that every time we have a water main break, costs go up. So, you know, our new public works people here, I mean, we really have to do something about that. The council always, we set designate funding for these infrastructure improvements and I'm just not seeing the reality of them happening. And so we have new people on board here and I, I am hoping that we can make significant improvements, duly noted here, but you know, we have to make these improvements. It's just, you know, Band-Aid just keeps costing this city more and more money. So these are the primaries here that I really would love to see us focus on because again, we as a council budget and we're not seeing the results here that we should be seeing. So please note, and we probably should do some sort of a presentation on water bills once again, but we're going to have to explain why 20, well, okay, let's just back up for a second because this storm session is going to cause probably more and more, but we, we need a plan to solve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Director Sung, thank you and thank you for keeping us on track. You've been doing a fantastic job to you and your staff on that. So this is an action item if there can be a motion to accept.
Accept. Motion to accept.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Second up.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Fung. I see nobody of the public left in the room. Any, anybody on Zoom there? We love finances though. Okay, call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, agenda item number. Agenda item number 14 passed by a vote of five to zero.
Excellent. All right, we are, we are running late. Oh, I'm sorry?
Mike, your mic is off.
If we could each try to do council comments for the public, it is supposed to be when your city council reports out on meetings that they have attended on your behalf. And really it's a way to share that information with council because with the Brown Act, we can't go and tell each other what's going on. So with that, we have brand-new council members. I hate to put you on the spot. Councilwoman Pappen, would you go first and show us the way?
Sure. And can I get a timer up so we, I can stay on time?
I don't think we even have three minutes. I think we're at two minutes.
No, two minutes is fine. That's great. But just want to make sure. Okay. Again, I am honored and humbled by the vote today from the 20 mayors in our jurisdiction reappointing me to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and we have much work to do along those lines. Went to the new restaurant opening, Yen Peninsula, is that correct? Ooh, the food was very good. Where Zen Peninsula used to be, so highly recommend, please check that out. Was really good. The sheriff's inauguration, Sheriff Corpus really has some amazing plans and we look forward to her implementing those now that she's actually taken the position and the people that she has brought on, I think are going to be great. So there, there is hope and she needs to hire 100 deputies. So let's, hopefully she can fill those positions. Let's see, welcome our new Captain Allen and I'm done. Thanks. Good night.
Councilwoman Pappen?
Oh, I'm sorry. So yeah, MTC is also trying to get a new executive director. I am on the review committee for that. Hopefully by the end of the month, it is very sad that Therese McMillan is leaving, but hopefully we will get new operations there, moving in the right direction. And I'm going to try to do another bus tour of our city and the other cities so that the new executive and the new members of the commission know what Samatteo County and our cities is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for everything you're doing on MTC and all the other committees you're serving on with that. Who would like to go next? Councilman Fung?
Thank you so much. Also, very thankful today for all the 20 mayors and the representative today to appoint me to the Housing Endowment Regional Trust. Hopefully I can make some progress as an organization to help make homeownership a little bit more affordable and more attainable and more, just make it more available to everyone here in Samatteo County. At the same time, we had our first Peninsula Clean Energy, the executive board meeting earlier this week, working on the DEAI policies and how to make sure that minority and women-owned businesses are more competitive in getting those contracts. So we're making some conscientious effort in those policies there. Also had the legislative committee within Peninsula Clean Energy meeting to figure out how to move forward with the new legislature in Sacramento. We have a lot of new members there and we also have some friends there as well. So hopefully we can make some headways in being able to lobby for some favorable legislation to help make clean energy more available. What else? Yep, so participated in the Yen Peninsula opening. So everybody, you know, please visit, it's a great restaurant. And also the Music Land opening, making music more available to our youth, our seniors. You know, it's, it's a great program. So more of these after-school programs for our children is always a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Councilwoman Cahalan?
I know you're brand-new, so.
Yes, no, no committee report outs yet, but I also had the opportunity to attend Sheriff Corpus's inauguration and I agree, I'm very excited about her initiatives and goals and plans and looking how we can partner with her in Millbrae to make those a success. Also attended the Music Land grand opening. What a great new business in our community to bring more music to our city. Very excited about that. And then I also just really want to echo gratitude to all the folks working through the storms, living in an area that's usually severely impacted by storms. All of the work this past year to collaborate with SFO and to get the clearing of the canal, the first half of the clearing of the canal. And then through these storms, not only all of the work, but the constant communication, the detailed information that I can give the community members to know what's happening. I'm hearing from folks in the neighborhood that they're sleeping better through the rain for the first time in decades and are so appreciative of having that information. So thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate my two council colleagues on their regional leadership appointments today. Congratulations and, you know, heavy is a head that wears a crown, so we hope that you'll be able to do us well and serve our, our city and the other cities very well. Thank you. Also to Sheriff Corpus, I attended her inauguration and swearing in, it was great. Found out I was, I went to high school with her younger brother, or older brother, I guess. And congratulations to Captain Allen. And additionally, I'd like to also thank our staff and public works team for their tireless dedication during this, their response to the storms. Let's see how much time I got. I would also like to state that I did also attend the opening of Music Land. It was great. The students were just phenomenal, their performances as well as the instructors that performed as well. I did attend the cultural arts advisory committee. It was great to just be able to observe and hear about the upcoming, excuse me, art show and be, I look forward to being able to contribute more, to participate in that, on that committee. I would also like to thank the city staff and the department heads for taking the time over the last few weeks to meet with me and provide me with an overview of your jobs and the departments you all lead. And thank you for staying up this late because I'm sure you're, you're going to be right up in the morning here. So thank you so much for being here tonight, but also thanks for your commitment to our community as well and our, our council. And then lastly, in the coming weeks, I do look forward to being able to host a District Four advisory, community advisory meeting where community members can come and get to know me and that I can get to know you and your concerns and some of the challenges and opportunities for us. Obviously, the invite will go out to the entire city, but it should be focused on, hopefully focused on District Four. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. The Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee has chosen the logo for Adopt a Spot. Going to wait for the weather to dry out a little bit. Great thank you to Justine Bleeker, our PIO, who has been phenomenal in helping to do some of the graphics for that. All of the graphics were great. You're going to love the one that they chose and we'll be rolling that out. MCAC will also be, MCAC will also be rolling. MCAC will also be, CAC will also be rolling out some tree programs coming up in the next two months. And something that I think I can talk about, but city manager, you can shush me. They had been wanting to roll out an Adopt a Drain. I bring this up now because in the news all over the Bay Area is a lot of attention to Adopt a Drain. And we had put it on hold for a year, but they're going to be coming back and starting to work on that so that we can help our public works people keep our drains cleaned. Vice Mayor Goodman talked about cultural arts. They have moved the art show back to where it usually has been. It's going to be on May 19th and 20th. And that means that it can work in with the school schedules. The students are through their second semester. They've got art pieces to submit. It works better with that. And it takes off that heavy load that the city and our community groups have in October. So that'll do that. I want to thank the three of us who have met with our new city lobbyist. That meeting happened last Friday. I believe two more are yet to meet. I'm looking forward, staff, to bringing us the report of what all five of us think are our priorities and working through and having a stronger voice in Sacramento. And then just a quick update from Cal Cities. I want Councilwoman Cahalan to know that she is our representative, South City Councilman Eddie Flores, and Peninsula President Mark Negalis to get you into the League of California Training. We know that you were, what, 23 on the training list? But they are going to try to move mountains so that you can get there. It might be in Southern California, but it might be in North. So that came up on the call this morning, the Council of Cities Selection City Call. So they have their eye on you, and we're trying to get you in there. With that, I would again say thank you to staff. Good luck to all of us. And
Mayor, can I make one more comment? Because this is exciting about our economic development. So in the Mercury News, I think it was yesterday, if you look up this new restaurant, you may know about it, Hana Izumi. The Mercury News labeled this as the most exciting restaurant in coming into the Bay Area. So right here in the city of Millbrae, 293 El Camino, Hana Izumi is the name of the restaurant. It is a Japanese sushi restaurant. You can't even get in there unless you make reservations. So another great restaurant coming to the city of Millbrae. So, you know, we'll keep up that great economic development work. So I wanted to make that, look it up.
Good job.
Excellent. You know, along that line, and I know everybody wants to go, our PIO has been doing so much work. But four of us attended the grand opening of Music Land. It was phenomenal. They want to work with Park and Rec and probably also with Culture Arts on bringing a lot more music to Millbrae. We have the new ballet studio. Maybe we can do some outreach about our businesses on there because we're getting some lovely new businesses. But Music Land, a 10-year-old violinist, oh my gosh. And the pianist who played Chopin, 11 years old. You can't believe how good they are. So I can't wait that those teachers will bring those skills to our students and our older population. Thank you all. Happy New Year. Be safe tonight. Closing council at 11:32.